And welcome to the planning board meeting of April 10th, 2013. Tonight in attendance, we have Mr. Bob Watts, Mr. Christopher Rich, Matilda Evangelista, myself, I'm Harry Lockatilia. We have Howard Snyder as our planner and Wendy Beaumont taking the minutes as the assistant planner. Without any further ado, being after 10:00 PM and having a call.
10:00 PM?
Uh, excuse me, 7:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. I hope that's not an omen. Being after 7:00 PM. Uh, well, the meeting's open. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Do you make a motion to accept March 27th, 2013 minutes?
Seconded, it's subject to any changes that my colleagues may have.
Till he moves?
Till he meant to.
Yep.
Put that in.
Yep. Motion's been made to accept the March 27th, 2013 minutes with corrections noted, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
I have a couple of the corrections. I don't know if they've already...
They've been...
We got two.
No, you haven't gotten two sets of minutes.
Oh.
The minutes you have in front of you that came in the packet, you responded to Wendy and she got the comments integrated.
Oh, did I do that? No, I didn't send it.
You didn't get them from...
I wasn't sure, I rather I did it.
No, I believe the only comments I got were from...
My correction?
Yeah, from Harry. I don't believe I did get them.
They're minor, they're not that...
Say what a good job you did.
You did.
I was amazed at how many pages.
It was, it was a lot.
On page five, I got 209.
Would it be easier for you to email this information to me rather than...
We can do it.
I only got two things.
You have to do it right now.
It's not long.
Number 209?
You got chapter 48, but, but it really was chapter 48.
I corrected that, I picked that one up already.
Did correct that one?
He picked it up on another line, yeah.
Okay, then I got, I got one more.
What else are you going for?
That's another little one.
That was just a typo.
All right, on page 21, on 894 page number. I am talking and I'm saying, I know that checking on this, I would like to see that prior to that, what it would, I think was eliminated was what is prior to that.
So you'd like to say, what is inserted between the words "see" and that?
I would like to see what is prior to that. You see where that is?
What was prior, what was prior to that?
Yeah, that's it, that's all.
What was prior to that?
I will, um, I've already made your changes and I will make yours as well.
Okay, good.
Well, have you all sat?
It was a bit though, it was a lot of pages.
Have you all sat?
Yes.
Okay, good. In that case, if there's no more corrections to be made, all in favor of accepting the minutes of March 27th, 2013 with noted correction, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Mr. Rich, going for the vouchers?
Yeah, I was gonna say, in the interest of time, can we skip over correspondence and go right to vouchers?
Absolutely.
And we're going to make a motion that we accept the vouchers as submitted by the planner. Are they in the original packet, Howard, or...
They're in originals, right?
I didn't put them out.
Howard, that's not fair.
And your motion is for $136.79?
Yes, and so you kind of have to do second it for discussion.
I would second it for discussion.
$136.79, seconded by, by Bob. Discuss.
Mr. Chairman?
Maybe we go. Where are you, Bob?
I have a question on the, the reimbursement.
March reimbursement for the town planner? Yeah, what's, what's going on?
Um, the question is, does the board get reimbursed for their travel to that too?
We're not employees, I can answer that.
Um, we went out of fish capacity.
I don't see why not, I mean, that's, that's pretty, that's up there.
Can we find that out?
Yeah.
Please? You did take my truck and it averages 13 feet per gallon. What do you get, 55 and a half cents a mile?
Yeah.
That, that's the federal rate and I confirm that with accounting.
Yeah, sounds about right. About what I burn in gas. What about, uh...
In reimbursement?
Yeah, the town planner reimbursement, uh, what about mass, what is the Mass Housing Partnership? What is that, a, a...
On May 7th, the DHCD is working with MHP on putting together Planning Production Progress, a Planning Community Development Conference, and...
Out of DHCD. Are you going, you going to that?
Yeah.
Your planning is all of that and 45... Oh, it's the, that's the payment.
Right.
That's for the dues for, for...
Is that, is that different than the affordable housing requirement?
Planning and community development. Right, it has less to do with affordable housing, it's more about community planning.
What is that, Fort Devens?
Yeah. And we met some people from Fort Devens at the conference, so I'll probably see them again.
Any more questions about the vouchers?
Good.
Motion was made by Chris, accept the vouchers, one, no, you made it, seconded by Bob.
Yeah.
You're thinking of the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Seconded by, uh, seconded by Bob, motion made by Chris for $136.79.
Zip code.
Right?
Right.
Good?
Oh, good.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't really look at it.
All in favor, say aye.
I'll vote.
You vote yes? Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Next, in line, uh, vouchers are done, and... Nope, if you could throw a signature on that, we can get it right back to...
Nope.
There, and we'll be all done. Um, this is a public hearing, we have a site plan approval. Oh, do you want that back?
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, being on or off to 7:00 PM, I am opening the hearing for Honeydew Donuts. Map 10B, Lot 33A, and will the applicant step forward, please? Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Dennis Lamaco.
Dennis Lamaco, thank you.
Dennis, I got a call from the engineer, he said he would be here. Is, is he coming, or?
I thought he'd be here also.
Okay. I, I spoke to him briefly on the phone, the applicant's engineer may be here at 7:30, so. You, you can proceed, I'm just saying he may be coming in.
Sure. You said at 7:30? Well, the hearing's open, the hearing is hereby open. Welcome, Dennis. You might wanna throw that up there, good, good stuff. Does everybody have a copy of this?
Uh, I don't think so.
Howard, do you have some copies?
I can go down to the office and get them, I was...
Thank you.
They had been distributed back in February, I thought everybody was gonna have a copy.
I couldn't find mine either, I had to come back into the office and get it. Dennis, why don't you, why don't you tell us what's going on? Uh, Howard, could you also bring a copy of the application too? Please?
It's here.
Oh, where is it? Never mind. Uh, I'm just gonna read this, this is, um, the application for site plan approval. In accordance with Section 16583 of the Georgetown Zoning Bylaw, site plan approvals required for the following, uh, and this is for construction and exterior alteration, and I have a funny feeling you could sit right up here and, uh, you for Honeydew Donuts, sir?
Yes.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Steve Stepinski from Meramec Engineering.
Welcome, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, changing use of any building for commercial, industrial, office, multifamily, municipal, institutional, utility, fraternal or recreational purposes. The petition is Dennis Lamaco. Uh, the location of the property is 105 East Main Street, Georgetown, it's in a zoning district RACB, that's residential A and commercial B, it's a split parcel. Uh, this is the, the parcel, uh, being requested is Lot 10B, uh, excuse me, Map 10B, Lot 33A. This is to construct a honeydew, a honey donut shop, and this is a 1,600 square foot restaurant. And why don't I leave it to you, sir? I think that's about all I have to say to effectively open the hearing.
What is it you'd like to know?
It's all in the, it's all in the record now.
What would you like to know?
This, this is Dennis Lamaco, Honeydew, the, the owner, and essentially, what he's proposing to do is utilize the existing building on the site, the existing parking on the site that we have outlined, and renovate it and put a donut shop in there. There's a relatively new septic system, uh, that's been put in, that would service the facility, he's going to have to add a grease trap, but otherwise, there's really no other work that he would be doing on site. Parking lot's already striped, spaces are already there, it's already lit, so basically you would use the existing conditions that are on the site, he's not gonna build any addition to the building. All the renovations would be interior renovations, so really, the only modification is the grease trap that the Board of Health would require. Nothing else would be changed.
Could you say again, what, what would the Board of Health require?
There'd be a grea, exterior grease trap that would have to go in, which we show on the plan.
If you would, Howard, please.
Yep, for the kitchen waste.
Right there, right there. You haven't been before the Board of Health yet, have you?
We, we, we haven't been, we've had discussions with the Board of Health staff.
I sit on the Board of Health.
We haven't been there.
He's got a good memory, so.
Right.
Sometimes. Gotcha. That is a new septic.
Yep. So we, we have all the as-built information and everything else from your staff and...
You're using the existing building, it's just a build-out, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
So no drive-through?
No drive-through.
Intentional drive-through, this is Georgetown, some people have a tendency to...
No, there's all...
They tried it at one of the coffee shops.
There's all kinds of gravel and stuff in the back, they have all there, so.
You could have a rough time.
Bylaw doesn't allow it anyways. Right, you get a good picture there on the GIS.
Well, there you go. That's the, uh, oh, there we go. And this is the subject here, this is where you are, right?
Yep.
And you'll be, oh, maybe, maybe that's something, Bob, do you have any questions?
No.
I'll start with.
I have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
How many feet of frontage do you have?
On the street? The lot frontage is 122.4 is the existing.
That's not what...
112.4, I'm sorry, 112.4.
And commercial business, the required frontage?
160.
160, so you asking for a, a waiver?
I think the, this lot had, had already been subdivided, there's a, a plan that the board had signed that created the lot, I have a copy of it.
Was it an A&R?
A&R. So I'm assuming that it went to the zoning board, I don't know that for a fact, but...
Howard, do you have any information on that?
Not on the lot frontage, no.
No, no, with respect to, um, this going to the ZBA?
For, for this application?
No, not for this application, but for any prior application. Can I have the book and page of that, Mr., I'm sorry, your, your name one more time?
Steve Stepinski, Plan Book 27614.
What I have is a copy of when Anthony DeLorenzo came before for 105 East Main Street and 5 Elm Street for variances, uh, all permits necessary for addressing all existing businesses, bulk storage, parking setbacks, buffer zone, issues for all existing structures, including trailer sheds, both temporary and permanent. They were granted a variance with conditions for a side setback of zero, uh, shown as number one on the plan, Exhibit B, I don't have that exhibit.
Is that that plan?
You know, I, I have to...
Is that that plan?
You know, I have to, I have to correct what I told you, I didn't look at the other dimension, there's two, two numbers, there's actually 235 feet of frontage, so there's adequate frontage. There's a curve, I didn't, the dimensions on one side and then on the other side, I missed that, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry?
Can you pull it?
There's a, there's a dimension on one side of the line and then on the curve, it's on the other side, you gotta add the two numbers together.
So the 112 is for the, the straight?
The straight, the 112 is the curve.
Then there's the curve, right.
So we're gonna have to modify the plan?
It's on the drawing, but up in the chart, I guess it's not.
And this is inch and forty?
You got the one, you got the 112.4 and then you've got the 123.91 on the other side. If you look kind of in the street.
The radius, the radius is the 123?
The, the radius is 390, the length is 123, right. You gotta add the two numbers together.
So from this point over is 123?
Right, and then the 112.40.
So this point is the 112?
Right.
Excellent, great.
So you've got the frontage.
That, that A&R plan you, you referred to, could I get that planning book, could I get that book and page again?
Yeah, it's Plan Book 276, Plan 44.
Okay, Plan 44.
Yep, and it was, um, you know, it could be Plan 14, it's, I'm gonna tell you, it's hard to read on the, on the original, let me see if I have it here. It's Plan 14. So Plan Book 276, Plan 14, and it looks like it was signed by the board, I'm gonna say December, had to read either 31 or 21, probably 31, December 31, 1991. This is when it was signed.
They did a...
They don't.
They had a New Year's Eve planning board meeting?
I...
What year?
1991.
91, they were incredibly dedicated members of the board.
That must have been a fun meeting, I'm telling you.
I'd love to be an applicant, um...
That's when it's dated.
Wow.
Does it say where the meeting was held?
Well, Gia Donalds was open then, right?
Three Gs was open.
Three Gs.
Did they put any conditions on it?
Are you looking at an A&R?
I'm looking at the A&R here.
Looking at an A&R?
Right.
Okay, well, so not necessarily, what was the, was, was that a, a different plan that was being referenced there?
That's a...
In the, in the variant?
What's the date of the variance?
It was received by the town clerk on June 3rd, 1997.
Right, there's another plan I have...
1997, oh, okay.
It was signed, um, June 2nd, 1997 by the zoning board.
Can I see? Variance?
You got a copy of this in your supplemental packet?
Is it in the supplemental? Didn't have a chance to.
Your supplemental packet, it's the last two pages.
It was also a subsequent for me that, uh, planning board signed in 1997, June 11th, uh, April 11th, I'm sorry.
That would have been after this, ZBA, um...
Would have been before that.
It was before the ZBA's.
That was, that was signed in June.
It's April 11th, 1997.
April?
April 11th, 1997, and that's Plan Book 93.
Oh, go slowly for me. Wendy, you picking all that up?
I don't know, it's right here in my cabinet.
And what, what plan?
315.
Plan Book...
93, 315.
And Plan 395, did you say?
315.
Oh, 315.
Plan Book 315, Plan 93.
Oh.
They got, they got the numbers reversed on here, it's, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Registry reversed it there and they've got them different here. So it's Plan Book 315, Plan 93, and they got it backwards on the inside.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, great.
And, uh, the board signed it April 11th, 1997.
97, great, okay, good, looks like we have all the background information.
This, this variance is for two, two buildings. One is 4, 105 East Main, and the other is 5 Elm Street.
I think 5 Elm Street is the, was the car, is that the car dealer, I think, that's, yes, what was there?
No, this, that, that's the property that's shown on, on the map as Cathy L. DeLorenzo.
DeLorenzo, right.
That's 5 Elm Street.
So this would be...
They wanted a driveway there.
Map 34?
Okay.
Right, Lot 34. This is Lot 34 over here. Great.
Um, in 105, has two buildings on it.
But that's allowed under this, under this variance?
Correct.
If I'm reading this correctly. As is the driveway from Elm Street onto Lot 34. As is a sign that used to be there, I guess, but it was no longer there. That's the, the big sign that used to be sitting out there. It was all conditioned on a green wall to consist of 70 10-foot-tall arborvitae, 24, having trouble, 24...
Trees.
Trees of assorted maple, oak, birch, linden, being two to two and a half caliber, assume they meant inches in caliber, be planted by June 1st, 97, and that the board, meaning the ZBA, will hold a review in 1990, in September of 97. And no permits shall be issued until an approval not required has been received from the planning board. So that must be that A&R that was three months, two months prior.
It's the green wall there.
Right, okay, good.
I don't know, I haven't...
It, it would be showing on the plan if it was, right? Could you, could you show that on the plan when you, when you revise?
I think it's...
And you have to revise because you're showing your...
This is what I think they're considering, Harry. This is...
Really on the other lot.
Right through here, this is, would have been...
I don't know what they're considering, it's, it's not very specific.
That's a, arborvitae being coniferous trees and, this is taken during, uh...
Supposed to be maple, oak, birch.
Late fall. But I can follow up with the ZBA to see if they've done any type of, um...
Would you please, would you please check on that?
What was the requirement that they would do approval not required?
Yeah, an A&R has been received from the planning board, but the way I'm reading this, the, the, the public hearing opened in February for this ZBA hearing, so February was continued on February 11th, then March 4th, and this is stamped, receive June 3rd, and this June 3rd stamp would be the town clerk's stamp.
Correct.
Um, either it was issued June 3rd, which, which makes sense because it's signed June 2nd, so it took a while to get the signatures done, but I would presume that the last date they're saying that the public hearing was held was March 18th, and your, your A&R is showing an April date, an April 11th date, which makes sense. So it's all fitting in now. Okay, great, good, 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 good. Chris, do you have any more questions?
Provided in your, I'm sorry...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention...
That's gonna need to be corrected.
Right.
On the plan, all right?
Sure.
This is not your A&R, this is your variance.
Right, but the variance references an A&R that must be received by the planning board. That was one of the conditions that the ZBA required, that an A&R be received.
Did you get an A&R for it?
That, that A&R would seem to be the April A&R that...
It's recorded at the registry.
Recorded at the registry and...
Can I see that A&R?
Plan 39, Book 315, right? Great. You should be able to pull that all up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while my, while my colleague is looking at the plan, what kind of a traffic flow are you expecting?
This is the, the one that's, the original, 91 of them.
You're not sure?
Hope it's a lot.
When you say traffic flow, are you talking about how many cars per day do you think will be increased? Is that what you're referring to, or are you referring to the flow pattern through, through...
Well, I noticed that there is a number of the neighbors from East Main here, and I'm anticipating any questions.
We'll get to all of their questions before this hearing.
And I would like to know the information.
I, I don't blame you, I don't blame you.
You know, what kind of, you have no idea what kind of business you're expecting?
No, I, I don't think we're gonna increase traffic flow on that road, we're just gonna pull off the existing, you know?
I understand that, but depending, I mean, there's a lot of cars that go down that street.
Yeah, there is.
Dennis, you own another location, right?
We own five locations.
You own five locations, do they have a similar seat capacity?
Compared to...
How many seats do you have?
The way, the way it's, pause right down, it's, it's 12 seats, because what we talked about.
12 seats?
Yeah. I'm showing on the interior plans, there's about 15.
It's the same proportion, Joe.
But yeah, the seating...
Are your other locations approximately the same size?
Yeah, they're approximately the same, same amount of seating.
And where are they located?
We have one in Stoneham, one in Melrose, two in Wakefield, and one in Danvers.
How many customers are you usually seeing a day?
It varies, I mean, one, one store we could see 300, another store we could see 600, so it depends on the location and the volume of the store.
Hours of operation?
Uh, 5:00 in the morning, up here probably 8:00 o'clock.
So 8:00?
Yeah.
Did they do a marketing plan just to, before you purchased this? Or are you purchasing, you're just leasing?
No, we're just leasing.
I have a quick question, um, I, I'm not seeing, help me, Ellen, please, I'm not seeing, um, and this, this seems to be slightly different, not different, but the, um, the lot lines, a little more bold than it's showing up here on, on this plan, on the printed plan. I'm seeing a lot line that's coming down here.
Right.
Cutting right in between the parking lot.
Right.
So this is actually Lot 33, and this, everything over here is Lot 33A.
Okay.
Which is your, the subject of your application. Um, on this side, I'm seeing...
287898.
I'm seeing these, right here, these arrows.
Right.
And I can kind of infer what it is, but I'm not seeing it in the legend.
I think that's just the traffic direction, obviously, yeah, it's not, it's not in the legend, but that is the, the direction of traffic.
Right, so you're gaining, you're using another lot? That's 33.
Right.
And that's 33A. And the problem being, if this to this is the frontage...
Yeah.
You need to gain your egress through that.
Well, right now, there's, um, you know, there's a, there's a curb cut right now on the, on that side of the street, right between the two catch bases, you can see it on the plan.
Yep.
And so there is access there, the only reason we have these arrows shown is because they were painted there, so, you know, we showed them the pavement, the existing pavement markings, so...
Right, but this is a site plan approval and...
Right, but that...
Right, but that would not want to, number one, this site plan approval doesn't cover the other lot.
Right, I understand that, but we're showing what's existing on the other lot.
Right.
Right, because it's, the building is contiguous, even though it's, the... I mean, we surveyed beyond the property line so that you could get a clear picture of, of what's going on. Went on and he doesn't have to use that lot for his egress. His egress is on the existing curb cut that is already with the lot. We're showing the arrows because those are pavement markings that are out there. You can see them in the photo.
And I more than understand that.
Right.
But you understand the position this board would be in if we signed this plan. That would approve this lot as well.
Well, I...
And that's not the subject and...
Alright, I can take, I can take everything off from the property line over if that's what you're asking.
Please do.
Alright, I'm trying to...
Make it much easier for everyone.
Trying to just give you a picture.
We don't have any authorizations for any, someone would think that that would be the entrance and the egress and the proposed traffic flow. And to my knowledge, you don't have permission to use that parcel. I haven't seen it in writing. I've seen writing from Bedrock. I haven't seen any writing from Georgetown Building Supply.
Is Bedrock, is Bedrock to trust that?
Bedrock is the trust.
That was created when Dana bought out his sister-in-law?
Yeah, but Dana does own the whole property.
Yeah, I know that. I know he owns the whole property. And I've seen that paperwork, Mr. Chairman, at the Board of Health when we did the septic system.
Mm-hmm.
There was a family issue and an inheritance issue.
Okay.
That was all resolved.
Okay.
Dana DiLorenzo and a new partner created Bedrock.
Okay.
And Bedrock owns both lots. They own the entire property. I believe it was subdivided because of the family issue.
Right now...
Their fathers had...
We're seeing this is Joan, this is being owned by Georgetown Building Supply. If this is owned by Bedrock...
No, formerly Georgetown Building.
Right. If this is owned by Bedrock and you have knowledge of that, please put that...
I don't know that. The latest assessors listing we had showed this being owned by Georgetown Building Supply. So I haven't seen...
And this being owned by Bedrock? A lot in question? Being owned by Bedrock.
Um...
Well, Bedrock is the one that gave the permission.
Right now, it's Danvers. I mean, the latest ownership we had was Danvers Concrete Block. Now, since we did the research, you know, they could have been conveyed.
When did you run your title?
It was back last fall. So... And the towns, the towns still, the assessors still have it listed this way as well.
Then it hasn't been conveyed? I think...
I'm not saying it hasn't been conveyed. I'm, I don't know that there hasn't been a subsequent conveyance. I don't know that.
Okay.
But I know the assessors still have, have it listed this way.
Okay.
I'd like to see who the record owner is.
Well, I, I'd like to know that, um, whoever in fact does own... And could you pull that plan back up? It would be much easier for everyone to understand. The subject, according to what the application says, is thirty-three B, lot thirty-three B.
Mm-hmm.
And to my knowledge, this is thirty-three B and this is a separate lot, thirty-three. And because they're separate lots, we need an application for a site permit from these folks because right now the only application we have is this one.
That's all we're, that's all he's applying for to do.
I understand. And if that is a lot and that lot is a separate lot, which it is, because I don't believe this line was removed by an A and R.
No.
Okay. Then it has to get its frontage and its egress from the frontage.
It does.
Right. Can you show that?
I do show it. I show the curb cut. Existing curb cut.
The one curb cut. Anyone looking at this would presume that those lines that you've drawn over here are the proposed traffic flow.
Again, you know, I, I'll, I'll remove it from the drawing. I mean, I understand that. You don't want a mother...
Everything on the other side of that property line is to be removed unless they can show that they have approval of that neighboring property owner to, to utilize their site or access from their site onto...
And to be subject to the conditions of the site plan approval.
So you can take it off the plan, but if it stays on?
I understand.
Okay.
I'm confused a little bit. Where does this, this doesn't show any break.
You can, I think we're, I, I, it, it's very difficult to see because unfortunately the, the curb cut is way, way out here.
Curb cut is, you can see the two catch basins.
There.
Yeah.
You see the curb, one's right out, the one end on the left side is right after the catch basin. The rim of eighty-three, eighty-seven. Then the other curb for the cut is to the right of the one that's eighty-two, eighty-two.
So on the next reitera, on the reiteration of this plan, we're gonna remove all of those, um, elevations because we don't need those.
Alright.
What we need is a very clear understanding of where that is and those curbs are.
You stated that, that you were going to not do anything to the parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
For a site approval, that has to be improved, in my opinion.
Yeah, this, this certainly...
That's not acceptable for a site approval. A parking lot like that. It's like a runway. Cars go everywhere to get in and there's no direct path, like you're putting an arrow there. Forget that. They just go wherever they feel like it. There's no breakdown. And plus the landscaping on the original, there's like a wall on that side, I think, is, is, uh, Dana gonna put some shrubbery there or dress it up a little bit with landscaping?
I have no idea what I, Dana's intentions are with the landscaping.
Well, that would be my concern. That's not acceptable, a parking lot like that. I mean, this is the twenty-first century and that's...
We can't do anything about that because site landscaping under one sixty-five or I'll give a citation for it. Shaft of one sixty-five, eighty-three, L and subsection D. Uh, landscaping shall be provided in the front, side, and rear yards and along the perimeter of the parking areas to provide separation from the building and the public ways. Uh, at a minimum, parking lots shall be enclosed, at a minimum, the parking lot shall be enclosed by a landscape area five feet in width. So...
Dana's gotta improve on that.
I, I understand the side and speaking as myself, I, I, I think this would be a great addition to Georgetown. I'm not trying to
Did you do any marketing analysis before you decided to come here?
No, we didn't.
You didn't get anything like that? Honeydew doesn't do that.
They sent somebody out to just approve the site.
Okay.
Could you get a blimp picture of that again, please?
Real shot.
Can we see the front?
Show the main entrance. I'm getting there. I just wanted to zoom out a little bit.
Oh, there we are. There we are. There's that. There we go, from sidewalk to there.
Yeah, where's the, I'm, I'm just looking for the...
I'll keep looking.
Could you, uh...
Let, let, let the record show that, uh, Tim Howard arrives and we lost electricity.
And pulls the plug.
Wasn't on high.
At, uh, eight forty-five.
Seven forty.
Seven forty-five, excuse me.
Jeez.
I know, I'm just pushing the dents. Again, I'm only speaking as one member of the board here. From my own position, uh, I think what this citation is calling for is landscaping to sort of separate that huge parking area from the street in a visual kind of way. So I think what they're envisioning is a five-foot planting here and a five-foot planting here. And to be perfectly honest with you, I'd live with that. I wouldn't hold you to the sides and the back, myself. I can't speak for anybody else on this board. But I think that would be a very nice improvement.
Dana probably has some ideas to, to dress it up a little bit, to make it look more in character.
Yeah, he wants to improve the property, so I don't think he'll have a problem because, you know, he wants to, you know...
Perhaps, perhaps the best thing, though, if, if you're going to be, as you said, pulling a lot of traffic off of this East Main Street. And I'm just guessing. I know nothing about the donut shop, coffee business at all. You, you're the expert on that, sir. But I know when I pull in, it's usually early in the morning. Uh, it's usually right around the time that, to my knowledge, this road has its highest volume or one of its highest volume periods of the day. And I think what we need is a little more of a comprehensive solution to a traffic flow. A little more like the one that's up near Dunkin' Donuts. Not to say that word in front of you. Sorry. That's a little more of a comprehensive traffic flow solution.
In and out.
Uh, yes.
And I have, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I wanna make sure that with this access and egress, the other coffee shop, shall we say, or the other strip mall that has a coffee shop in it, people tend to go in there blindsided. I personally experienced almost getting run over and having a friend of mine's dog, who was on a short leash, get run over in front of me as we were walking across on the sidewalk.
Hey, people need coffee. It's early.
I mean, it's... That was forever burned into my, my mind. And to have something like that and that was just, that coffee shop didn't have access and egress coming out at the same curb cut.
Yeah, it's one in and one out. I don't know if you're familiar with the traffic flow, but just to let you know, it's very similar to this. Flip it around in the mirror and run it up the street about five hundred feet. And what was required was one entrance you go through, one exit that lets you go both ways out.
I designed it, so I...
Oh, then you're familiar with it.
So...
Good.
You know, so that shouldn't be a problem.
I, I think what, I think what you're, what the board, it sounds to me like what the board's looking for is a comprehensive solution to this potential safety hazard that could be created here. I have traffic issues and...
So would, would you suggest like some type of island at the driveway where they would enter and exit?
Uh, I would suggest that you come up with some kind of a solution. Okay, that meets Georgetown standards. Okay, and keeps the people driving up and down this road in the morning safe. And we'll take a peek at it.
And the people walking up and down the road.
And, and also for the sidewalk pedestrian safety as well.
I wouldn't put it by the curb at all because to the right, as, as you know, on Elm Street, that's the school traffic as well. So I wouldn't put any access and egress on that, that curve area. We, you know, I would make it over here.
Well, I think, you know, the town rebuilt, you know, the, I mean, this was rebuilt the, the entire roadway. I think, you know, the curb cuts are pretty much established. I don't think we're gonna...
Could you scale out that out for me? How wide is that interval? Do you have any idea?
I, I would just say it's probably, I mean, it's pretty wide. It's like thirty-six...
It's greater than twenty-two feet.
It's greater than twenty-two, so...
That's all I would...
You know, I think, I think it has to be, in terms of the location, that's probably in the right place, but in terms of what happens on the site, it needs to be modified, I think, is what you're saying. So I understand what you're looking for.
So you're, you did the traffic design on the others?
Yeah.
So you're, you could be doing...
I did the whole site plan on it. I did everything.
Well, then you could fix this one up.
So I understand what you're looking for. I think I have a good handle. Huh?
Continuity is a beautiful thing.
Yeah, let's, let's get it in character.
Sounds like an idea.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of these?
I do.
Okay, great. So try to...
So you're well aware.
Work it up as best you can, please. Are there any other concerns from any planning board members?
I'd like to hear from, uh...
I, I just have a few...
And we'll get there. I, I wanna hear what the planner says first. I didn't have a chance to read the comments.
Other department review comments were included in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just suggest that the, the applicant is, is citing, I don't know how many parking spaces that you're utilizing. Uh, what is it on the plan?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Those are all to the left, right?
All to the left. I would just like, uh, the plan to reflect the spaces that, that those twenty-seven are being considered. And it was because of the concern about there's parking on the other side. But just to make sure that the twenty-seven are contained on the site.
Yeah, the ones, you know, if you look at, there's three sets of nine that are directly in front of the building. I'd sort of shade them in brown. That's, we didn't count anything to the right of the property line.
I'm counting twenty-four.
And those are shared?
I'm not counting the one you split in the middle.
Okay. We, we, we counted it, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't have a, well, call that the motorcycle spots? Is that about, that for the bikes?
That could be bicycle rack.
And those are shared with the other businesses that are there?
I would assume so.
Yeah. I'm gonna charge Howard with the...
Is this the only vacant unit? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Is this the only vacant unit left in the building?
I believe there's four total to the left of the building supply. You have the liquor store, the building supply. I think there's might be three or four units. The building supply might have that...
Yours is being one of them.
Yeah.
You're in the end.
I'm on the end. I think there's two more.
I thought there's only four total.
Uh-huh.
But again, there's only one unit on this site and that's what he's applying for.
Exactly.
But I'm, I'm looking at the parking spaces and I'm wondering I think Chris is on the same lines as what I'm on.
Are they taking all of the parking spaces on that side of the building? Yeah, I think what is concerned...
It would, it would appear so if he's citing twenty-seven.
The other units have no parking?
On, on this site, there's, I count twenty-seven spaces and that's what he's saying he'll be using.
Right.
Nine, nine, nine.
The concern here is that if those other businesses...
On the other property.
Were permitted on the premise that this entire parking lot was their parking, are we now designating these as honeydews?
Dedicated just to honeydew.
And now creating a, well, it's not a nonconformity, but what is it, a...
Would you be able to get from the property owner any type of agreement that there's a shared use parking uh, agreement in place for these four?
Yeah. Well, after, I'll, I'll talk, Dennis and I will meet with the owner and see if he has plans for a reciprocal easement agreement or what his plans are, but I would assume like, I would assume like Dennis has to come before the board. I would assume that if you have another use, probably would have to come before the board, wouldn't it?
Right.
So, I mean, you're gonna see what those uses are and control the parking. You already know that these, these twenty-seven are gone, so... Or in the case, maybe twenty-four are gone.
Right. I'm just wondering if the, the building supply and the liquor store, which are existing uses, are premised on using all of these spaces. And I don't have the answer to that. I don't know how many spaces you need for, uh, building supplies.
Well, we're gonna be deleting everything from that side of the line off.
Well, you may not want to.
So...
You may not want to because then you might have to cut your, you might have to put the Jersey barriers back. You don't wanna do that. Well, what, the, the ultimate goal should be to get a comprehensive solution here.
So you are gonna keep the information on...
If the owner is amenable to that, that would be my ideal solution to clean this all up in one fell swoop.
Okay.
And make it safe so that this isn't a free-for-all of people going in and out, two different exits and bumping off.
Okay.
Bumping into one another.
Yeah, but I think if this, if this, uh, business is...
That's just my opinion.
This business is paying rent and the lo, and the requirement is twenty-seven.
No, the requirement's twelve. Or, excuse me, the requirement, the requirement of parking places is three.
One for four. Are you gonna have tables and chairs inside this?
Yes.
Restaurant use.
Right.
Twelve chairs.
Twelve chairs equals three parking places. Required. That's all you need, is three.
Well, I think you're, you're gonna, in your lease, you're gonna have designated parking spaces, correct? I mean, you're leasing the parking lot as well as the, as the building.
As far as I know, the parking lot is common area. That was never, you know, discussed about having certain areas of parking.
We'll have to get with the owner and see what his plans are in terms of an REA.
Because there's still room on the other side if, if you need it for, you know, quick in and out kind of thing.
Right, but the tough thing is only this lot is asking for site plan approval.
Right.
See what I'm saying? It's, it's it's tough. It's very, very tough that way.
Okay, so I think we covered it.
Howard, did you have?
No, that, that was it.
That was it?
And in terms of the planting, you were talking about along the street, you know, along the
Yeah.
street line. You said maybe not the sides?[1793.62]
Uh, that, that was just me. If I saw a comprehensive solution here, I wouldn't make you do it on the sideline. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for that.
Okay.
Because I know that to do that, you'd have to cut that parking lot in half.
You're talking about this sideline right here, this side property line?
Exactly. Yeah. A five-foot strip all the way.
Well, what do you suggest to fix it up?
And I don't think you want to do that. But that's what this calls for.
Okay. I, the, the answer is, I don't know the answer yet, because we really will have to meet with the owner to see what his plans are for the rest of it.
Okay.
And then from there, we can develop a plan, I think, that's responsive to your comments.
I...
Very good.
I know Dana to be a very, very reasonable person.
Yeah.
And honorable. And I, I, I can tell you, I suspect that once he hears that this is a potential solution to all this permitting, the vagaries that may come in the future, for sure he'll be amenable to whatever you suggest. You sound like you know what you're doing.
So we'll continue this?
Uh, we won't continue this until we've taken public comment.
Public comment.
Uh, we're going to take some public comment now. Like to, let me get about two, three minutes, if you could. Tell us if you support it, if you don't support it. And once you tell us that, after you tell us your name and your address, please tell us why, why you support it or don't support it.
There's also a sign and sheet in the front, which would be helpful with the minutes, so...
That would be very helpful. If you plan to speak, or you raise your hand and you want to speak and leave a comment, please sign that before you leave and leave the information for us. Does anybody at this time wish to make a public comment?
I will.
Hi, sir.
David Allen, eight Elm Street, I'm in a butter.
Dave, did you say your name was? Mr. Allen? May I call you Dave?
Yes.
Call me Harry.
Call me David.
David, please call me Harry.
Let me, uh, let me start by saying I love donuts. I don't want to take a pro or con position, but I would like to ask some questions.
By all means, please ask me, sir, and I'll, I'll transfer it to the, to the engineer or, or Mr. Demoto.
Okay. Can we start with the inadequate number of trees that were planted in the buffer zone fifteen years ago?
Sir, are you referring to what we read earlier this evening?
Berries and maypoles and...
Okay. Um, we're, I'm not even going to address that with them. I'm not going to transfer that, because I'm, I'm just going to tell you that we've already asked the planner to look into that, get a little more detail out of that, because evidently there was a plan that was created.
Yeah.
Would show that. Unfortunately, we don't have access to that plan. It's being referenced as Exhibit B or some such thing. I would suspect that's in the, in the zoning board of appeals files, and Howard's going to dig that up for us.
Okay.
And you will have that answer, or we'll, we'll have a way to ask that question more pointedly, uh, at, at the continuance of this, when that comes. Well, when, once Howard finds out, Steve, would you incorporate all that and figure it all out for us? Show that where it was supposed to have been?
Howard's gonna get, if he can get the plan and...
He'll dig it up.
Dig it up and, and send it.
You guys will work together, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, sir?
That's a start.
Is it a beginning?
How about signage for this business?
Are you referring to street signage? Are you, are you referring to street signage for, for safe egress or...
I'm referring to all signage. Will there be a nice big neon donut somewhere?
Not allowed in this town. Not allowed in this town.
The applicant hasn't made any application for any signage.
Right. There will be no signs, sir, because there's nothing showing here. However, with the redrawing of the plan, they may wish to add that. And if they do that, I would suggest that they show us a rendering of it on the building, so that this board can take a look at it. And we have a signed bylaw. Howard can fill you in on that. Okay? So we'll, we'll have a rendering of that. We'll know what it'll look like. And just by the way, this board recently found out that there was a Scrivener's error in nineteen ninety-six or ninety-three from a town meeting, where we looked back and the town meeting voted to remove roof signs, but because of a Scrivener's error, it never made it into the town code. So there are no roof signs anymore, or there should not be. The, the building inspector's been made aware of that Scrivener's error.
What are the hours of operation for this proposed restaurant?
Five to eight P M.
He's already stated it's five A M. to eight P M.
Okay. Um, will there be any restriction on diesel trucks idling while customers sit at the tables or get the takeout?
Uh, that's a question we're going to have to ask, and my only concern from that would have been where the loading area would be. And I would presume it wouldn't be...
Now, I'm not talking about loading on the load. I'm talking about customers.
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 Who stop for a cup of coffee and leave their trucks idling because they don't want to turn them off and the noise.
That's a good question.
Excellent, excellent question. So if, if I'm interpreting your question correctly, sir, let the record show that the, 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 the butter has concerns about vehicles idling in the parking lot.
I think that's a...
Is that, is that a good summary? Uh-huh. So that may be a condition.
Customer, not delivery.
Customers, not deliveries. Okay, okay. Can you answer that for me, Stephen?
I think it's, I think it's illegal to have an unattended car idling in Massachusetts.
I, I don't know that. I'm not an attorney.
I believe, I believe that is. And I think you can't leave a, you can't leave a car idling unattended. You should know that. So the driver's license plate.
Louise, can you make sure that someone, there's an armed guard?
That's right. I, you, I recall an issue with Dunkin' Donuts.
Right. You can't, you can't have...
The truck used to park in, in their frontage to run across the street to the other place.
Right.
And they'd leave it idling. I, that's a good point.
She's got an excellent point, because I can tell you right now, Tractor Trail is not going to shut down. And I would, I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I would like to expand a little bit more on the customer end.
Customer end?
Also, no, go past, go expand, pass the customer end.
Okay. And go to the deliveries, the loading, unloading?
How, how do you, do you cook everything on site?
No, the donuts are not cooked on site.
Donuts are not cooked on site. Gotcha.
So you will be receiving regular deliveries? Weekly, daily, et cetera?
Uh, we get, we get two deliveries a week.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from one vendor. Um, two deliveries a week from another vendor, and then one delivery, so total of five.
Are you getting those supplies in, in the door? I'm not seeing it.
Uh, there's a, there's a rear entrance.
Rear entrance right in the back.
Through the gate?
Yeah.
Will you have access to that gate?
Yes, we will.
It's where the concrete trucks used to go in and around.
What I'm talking about right here?
Here's the gate.
In between the building and the subject.
Back through and deliver back here.
Yeah. And so we will have signage that says deliveries in the rear?
How, what time of the days do they do that?
Um, depends what time. I mean, it's never early in the morning. You know, it could be late morning or early afternoon.
Kind of vehicle normally delivers?
Uh, eighteen wheeler for one company, uh, ten wheeler for another, and then a small, small trailer, which would be Pepsi. So the biggest truck would be the eighteen wheeler that comes twice a week.
Like the Cisco trailer that...
Yeah, it's a Perkins truck.
May I make a suggestion for, for a possible condition, which would be that deliveries shall only be conducted in the rear? Everyone, any problems with that?
I would, I would agree to that condition.
Yeah.
What do you feel about that? Paul?
And that there's a...
Resolving the rear.
Did we get a...
The delivery time, we're talking minutes, correct?
As a potential condition.
Uh, yeah, the longest delivery would be maybe twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, thirty minutes. We're not talking having a truck back there idling.
No, no. And they don't, they shut their trucks off. They all shut their trucks off.
Refrigerator trucks shut off?
Well, they shut the truck off itself, not, maybe not the refrigeration unit.
Some are separate.
Your concern, the noise of the fumes or both?
Both.
I see. We're in, we're in close proximity to neighbors. And in Georgetown, I don't know about the other towns that you're in, we listen very carefully to, to people.
Howard, could you pull that down a little bit?
Melrose, they don't care.
Could you pull that down a little bit that way? Yeah. Above this Durenzo, Durenzo property, well, could you identify that property? I don't see anything on there, but it, it looks to me as though...
That's the neighbor's here.
Is that all one big lot behind it?
Yeah, that would all be George Brennan.
And that would all be Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Okay. Is Mr. Brennan in the audience?
No, he's deceased.
Oh, I know.
What'd she say?
Evidently, the gentleman's passed away, so, uh...
Well, if he isn't in the audience...
I hope he's not there.
Mrs. Brennan. Mrs. President?
George is still alive.
Oh, he is?
Oh, okay.
Oh, goodness.
But he was notified, and he's, he's not in the audience.
Sorry, George.
Yeah. Yes. The rumors of your demise, George, have been greatly exaggerated.
Really?
Can you, can you tell me what the distance is from, Howard, can you go back to that? From the trees, this green area here, to the back? You're making me crazy.
Point, point.
Come down, please. Get the other down. From here to, I would say, your delivery area is right about here, if I remember correctly. Any idea what the distance is from that green area?
Well, it would, well, I can't say from the green area exactly, but, you know, there's an earth berm there.
Give me a guess of it.
That segregates it, so it's about a hundred and twenty feet to the corner of the building.
Okay, because the new septic area is right in...
Right.
Use it then.
Oh, you're right, that's what the septic is, yep.
Yeah, this is not a recent...
The septic sit, the corner of the building to the property line is, you know, a hundred and eight and a half. So then you've got the trees, so it's probably a hundred and twenty to the corner of the building from the trees.
How high is the septic system elevated?
Um, the septic is about six feet above the parking.
So you've got a six-foot somewhat sound barrier.
Right. Plus you have the earth berm.
And visual barrier. Mm-hmm, okay. I'm going to bring it back to, um...
Absolutely.
The, the only thing I would like to bring up is the, the deliveries. Well, how does, how does one ensure that, that customers shut off their cars? They don't just run in with the engine running?
Put a sign up front, says no idling vehicles or no idling vehicles left unattended.
That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you. Thank you. That's an excellent suggestion. And were there any other questions, David?
Here's one more. I think the plan only showed one handicap parking space out of the twenty-seven. I don't know what the town's requirements are, but that seemed a little skimpy.
Goes by the number of seats in the restaurant.
Oh.
And that's, what do I, other volunteer jobs in town, is on the handicap coordinator? That qualifies. That's, the one space is all he needs for the nu, for that number of seats.
And I think that's the end of my list. Thank you.
That does have a ramp going up, doesn't it? To the sidewalk where that space is? Say yes. If there's not one there, make damn well sure there is.
It, it is. It's, comes right down on grade.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought of one more.
Did you, did you have one more, sir?
Yeah.
I thought you did.
Obviously, there are school kids going to Penbrook in the morning when there'll be quite a few customers, I would think, interested in stopping.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there anything to be done, striping or whatever, to have the kids be aware that they're crossing a curb cut of the right turn as, or...
And I could drive one.
Um, I think that would be something we would probably want to address if we saw a more comprehensive and egress and traffic flow solution. And at this point, we don't know if we are or are not going to get that. Uh, we're hoping that, I think we have good hopes that we are going to see...
Well, I, I can answer the question right now. I mean, the, the way the town designed or approved the design for East Main Street, they have the sidewalk continuous across, you know, the curb cuts. I mean, you know, it's, it's not like, right? It's, if you look at it, it's, it's a continuous sidewalk.
Concrete.
So there's, there's really nothing to be done there, because that's the way you designed it. You didn't design it as, you know, a, a different material. I think if, you know, you make the assumption that if people are old enough to walk on a sidewalk, then they are old enough to know that there's a driveway there.
Well, it is a different material. You've got bituminous and then sidewalk's concrete.
Right, except the sidewalk is continuous across the curb cut. If you take a look at the picture, it's not, you know, some curb cut aprons have bituminous that, you know, cement concrete ends at the, cement concrete ends at the curb cut, and then it's a bituminous curb cut. But the town approved the design with the concrete apron, so it's a continuous sidewalk across, so there's nothing you can really do, because in fact, the pedestrian has the right-of-way.
Might be a stop bar or something.
Might be dead rights too.
Right, right. So I think when we...
Fortunately, we're, we're gonna be looking at this, uh, with, uh, with a great deal of, with a five, a minimum of five-foot, um, landscape barrier.
Right.
It terminates here, it terminates here.
Right.
Carrying over in both directions. So, it'll be a little bit more of a visual, visually obvious thing that here's a break and here's cars coming in and out.
Right, you're gonna have a defined curb cut and there'll be stop control most likely on it and pavement markings that control the, the traffic flow. I think that's what we're talking about doing. So, I think it'll be obvious where the curb cut is.
Right. With that, you're concerned about sightline?
Yeah.
With that, five-foot? Yeah. Well, bear in mind that, um, the, the way this, it looks to me, the way this is, the, the actual property line is, um, actually back here, if I'm not mistaken.
Property line is...
You won't be able to actually come up to the curb, because that's town right-of-way and your property line, as you're showing on the survey, is pretty far away from the, the sidewalk.
Right, but I think we're talking about...
Any improvements you make will be naturally on the subject property.
Right.
So, that, those, those landscape elements will be back far enough so that a car could pull through, gain sight view, and then... And is my assumption correct?
Uh, it, it, that's, that's correct. And, you know, the driver's eye is up three point five feet, so when you look at, you know, the plantings, they'll be designed so that you're not gonna have, uh, you know, plantings that are gonna impair the site distance. You're not gonna see rhododendrons there on our plan, I'm sure.
There's the fire hydrant from that side, that picture. Oh, on Elm Street?
It's on the corner there.
Uh, Lake Lucille's across the street. There's plenty of water over there.
Oh, 'cause I'm not seeing it on the plan.
Right by the electric sign.
So, is that two hundred feet? Isn't that a requirement, two hundred feet?
I think you're thinking of subdivisions.
I know, but I'm just wondering. They're, they're gonna...
You're thinking of the subdivision. And it's four hundred. Um, but, um, did that, did that come close to answering your question, Dave?
Came close, yeah.
Okay, and, uh, and, and we'll be, we'll be following up on these anyway, because these are other questions. I see another hand?
Yes.
Would you please identify yourself and please make sure you sign in?
Mary Keene, Elm Street. Mary Keene, twelve Elm Street. K.E.E.N.E.
Hello, Ms. Keene, Ms. Keene. May, may I call you Mary?
Uh, yes, but I vote by Margaret, so I'd rather call you Margaret.
Okay, Margaret. I'm Harry. Welcome.
I mentioned Mary because by, that's by voting. I missed the voting list by Mary.
On the vote, I, I'll get you. Sure.
We, we lived in our house when there was once a restaurant in that parking area. And this is one of the reasons that we came up with the questions about idling trucks. And I'm still concerned about that if, are there ever two people in a truck? So you could have a truck idling out there with the diesel exhaust going? You say it cannot be, not be idling with no one in the truck, but can someone be sitting in the, in the...
Candidate, yeah.
Or the other seat.
Or the other seat.
Yeah. Is my question. Could, could there be another occupant of the truck? Therefore, the truck could sit there.
It, it, it sounds like, yeah, if, if someone were sitting there waiting, standing, I believe, is the, the legal term.
Right.
Then I would, I would imagine you could.
There's no way to be exhausted from those trucks. It's really a detriment to the...
I understand.
And one other detriment that I remember from that period was I noticed that he needed to increase the, the grease trap, had a grease trap, and the exhaust systems, uh, all of the exhaust system poured out into the neighborhood. And I don't know whether it was a greasy spoon or not, but it certainly smelled like hot grease.
I understand.
For the entire time the restaurant was open. So those are my two concerns about having a restaurant there. Maybe because the donuts aren't made on-site, it's not a concern, but the grease trap, uh...
Could you, could you respond to that? Uh, it sounds like it's a little more your, your Valley work there.
We have no grease on the premises. We cook our donuts at our other location. The only thing that's cooked on the premises are cookies, muffins, uh, bagels, some Danish inside of an electric oven. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't get any type of smell like that. No, there's no exhaust.
Down to donuts, so I...
There's actually no exhaust hood because it is an electric oven, so...
Grease trap is required by the Board of Health. Once you do any cooking on-site, there has to be a grease trap. Period. No matter what you cook.
And one other point, I believe, back in this hearing, it was ninety-seven, there was a restriction put on the property to stop how early, uh, activity could begin in that lot because of the residential area. And I think it was, I think Dana even exceeds that, because I think it was seven o'clock in the morning, but I'm not sure.
Okay, everything that we have so far, as far as our, because this is very cursory examination of the history of the lot, uh, tells us that there were four variances granted and, um, we didn't see a condition like that in the paperwork that we have. Which is not to say that there isn't another, uh, permit or variance that was granted at some point. And what, what was the date you said, or of the year?
I, I assume that back in ninety-seven, when you were, because we went to all of the hearings with the Di Lorenzo property.
Okay.
And I know that there was a... Pardon?
That would've been this property at the time, good.
Yes, that's correct.
This subject property at, at that time?
That's correct, yes. And, uh, that's the time when they insisted on putting in the berms and the green barrier.
Okay.
Which was iffy. Uh, I mean, it ended up being iffy. But I, I believe it was back in, I'm taking the date from what...
From what we're saying.
What you're saying, yes.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna query the, the zoning board of appeals office and Howard's gonna find out for us if, if there was anything over and above this one. I can tell you that, that this decision does not mention any conditions on hours of operation. And, um, uh, I, I...
If there was a...
I don't believe it's, i- is this a use variance? This is a, what are these variances? How would you characterize these variances?
This, this was both, a special permit slash variance.
Oh, okay, so even though it doesn't say a, a special permit?
It's a change of use.
Yeah, okay.
Because the buildings were built and, and, as you know, without any permitting, meeting the zoning, meeting anything else done, it was already completed and used. And, and, uh, the issue came up about wanting to put a driveway from this...
Off the side.
Five Elm, five Elm, uh, changed the thing.
Oh, could you pull that over just, just a little bit for us?
And, uh...
This is, uh, not, this is not...
Bearing in mind that, oh, yep, it's not good. Yep, that's, you gotta come up with something a little better than that, huh? Did it work?
It'll take a second for it to...
It'll pop back in?
Some people will just do anything to get a little attention.
Radetata, radet.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I didn't know if the other end was...
Well, at any rate, um...
And I think during that period...
Five Elm Street.
Five Elm Street.
Five Elm Street and one oh five, the subject of this.
Yes, yes.
Uh, were the subject of this decision. And that's the, the driveway that, that somebody was, uh, was referring to.
Yes.
And that's part of, of this decision. But I don't see anything about, uh, hours of operation being curtailed.
There was another restriction that we understood was that they could not, uh, they could not have hours of operation on some...
Interesting.
Now, granted, this is when there was a lot of heavy equipment.
Oh, are you referring to a construction permit?
The concrete company, the cement company, Denver's block.
Oh, okay.
Hours of operation for that parcel.
Unless there's another...
So, what, what you might be referring to is...
Real parcel.
Is a, is not the, the one that we're looking at, with the permit for this and this, but rather the permit for this parcel. No.
Concrete block in the back.
Up, up top. Denver's, Denver's block.
Bad block up there, Denver's block. Well, there may very well be another, um, decision out there that, that we just aren't aware of. And Howard's gonna check that out for us.
So I think only two are set.
So we'll, we'll look for, special note that Howard, you're gonna look for, uh...
Right, but it's just a preliminary impression of that. If, if it's having to do with Denver's block, that may be specific just to that operation. It wouldn't apply to the whole site.
Oh, but what we did in the zoning board was, was on the site and, because, as you can see, the variance that was granted because of the inches between the buildings, what the zoning board would do was clean up and make any other permits.
Okay.
So that the whole use was legal. And that's how we cleaned it up, because, you know, when you come in like now, you know, as, as we've talked about, the, the driveway, the parking areas, you know, that, that's not acceptable. You know, and so that's, that's what the zoning board used to do, is anything that we saw that needed a permit, a variance or a special permit, we would so address it. And that's...
In, in much the same way that we'd like to try to address everything in, in site plan approval here.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't key in on whatever the applicant asked for. We went through the whole parcel. And that's how come we have so many on one sheet.
You're gonna follow along, I hope, at the end of, at the, at the, uh, after we finish all this discussion, we're gonna be continuing this hearing to a date and a time, and you'll make note of it. You won't get another notice in the mail. You'll have to be all personally responsible to, to find your way back here on that date and remind yourselves, okay? Any more questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up one more time. Any, any questions? Would you state your name for the record, please, and please, please sign in after? May I call you Lucille?
Yes.
Please call me Harry.
My only question is, when you have the entrance, for people, the traffic to come in and out, example...
When the entrance is determined...
Yeah. When you make any signage for coming in and coming out, how are you doing that?
What will the signage look like once we have resolved the question of where the actual entrance is gonna be? I, I, I think we can rely on, on Steve to, um, do his due diligence and we certainly, I, I can tell you, we, we will certainly be looking very closely at that.
The only reason that, that my question on that was, because right now with the donuts, you know, when you're coming in, let's say from the square coming down.
Right.
People are going into the out and also the...
The in, coming out. Both entrances. They're coming in both ways and coming out both ways, and that's not safe.
Okay, there are some people that are doing that.
Yes.
I understand.
I've almost got it.
Is, is the signing, the sign, and I'll probably drive by there tomorrow at some point, but is the signage that...
It does say one entrance and one...
Okay, and the signage is still there, to your knowledge?
But it's not big enough for people to see.
It's not big enough? Well, we'll, we'll certainly take that into, into consideration. Yeah, that's something we'll have to look at.
I wonder if the police, have you given him the site, the police department?
I have.
Yeah? I wonder what he, how many accidents have occurred at this, at this site? Because it's just, you know, open so much.
I, I'm not so interested in how many accidents have occurred, as how many may occur when you get,
Well, that's the reason...
As you said, more people streaming off.
That's the reason you want to address it, to prevent it. So, I'm sure the policeman would, would have a better idea. Other than that, I would just say you need a traffic consultant to address those things, uh, to do the best that we can to make it safe.
Perhaps we could see what Steve comes up with, as his engineer, he's a relatively, um, skilled engineer. And at that point, maybe we might want to make that decision, unless...
Before we make an applicant spend more money.
Yeah.
No.
See what he's got.
Who knows? Steve may come up with something we go...
Yeah, a little blatant say, I guess.
I used to be the assistant district five traffic engineer.
Oh, right.
Mass highway.
Well...
So...
That's right.
Sounds like you might have a clue as to how to...
What's that?
I used to be the assistant chief counsel.
Steve, if you lived across the street, draw it like you live across the street.
That's it.
Okay?
Yep.
If you do that for me, everything's gonna be fine. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Like your kids will be walking down the sidewalk.
Um, should we make sure he likes his kids?
Love my daughter.
Is, is there anyone, Lucille, did you have any more questions? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to ask a question? Going once, going twice, that's how you get us two times. Any more questions from the board or from the staff?
Are, are you gonna request this onto technical review, or are you gonna wait till the next application decision?
No, no point in doing that, Howard, and, uh, from my perspective, I don't see any reason to do that. There are so many revisions that are gonna be made that...
Get a good plan to send before we send it out for technical review.
I, I agree. I'm just saying, at a later date, or...
Perhaps, perhaps. Let's see what it looks like. I think you have a good idea what we're looking for and, um, and they have a lot of revisions tonight.
Are there any drainage issues that we...
Well, um, we may wanna look at that.
Are there any drainage issues in that lot?
You know, I, I looked at the topography and I, I would say honestly, the only issue is that the drainage isn't maintained. I mean, the catch bases are full. They need to be cleaned. But in terms of...
Catch basins on town property or...
No, on, on the site.
The show.
There, there's a catch basin on the site that collects the runoff from the site. Everything is graded to that one, exactly, the one in blue.
Yeah.
Exactly right. And that's interconnected into the town system.
Yeah.
And both the town system and the on-site system is full. So, I think there's a, you know, I don't know which one filled up first, but obviously the system in the right-of-way needs maintenance on the part by the town. So, I think that's an issue. And the catch basin on-site is full, and that could be full because the other ones are full.
Could be backing it up.
Could, but my, my sense is that, you know, the property owner probably hasn't maintained it. That would be my sense, right? Otherwise it'd be inaccessible, so...
May I suggest that, um, when you show your proposed, what's it called, landscaping buffer?
Yep.
That, um, you incorporate lid techniques and try your best to make that work for some of the drainage issues. If possible, as much as is practicable.
I, well, I think that, you know, the five-foot, if we're trying to achieve the five-foot planting strip and have the plants, it's pretty hard to put in things like rain gardens and things like that. I think the way we might be able to grade it is maybe plant selection that might be able to have some uptake capability and no curbing so that we get some runoff into that planting strip as well.
Exactly.
Without regrading the parking lot. But generally speaking, it's, it's kinda running in that direction anyway, so it's something we should be able to do.
Yeah, it might work.
Yeah. Should be able to do that.
Take a good, close look at it. You might see it'll work. Any more questions from anybody? Any more comments? Good? Good, Tilly?
I'm good. Do we have a day that, um, is convenient for everybody to put this on to?
I'd first like to ask Steve how long, and, and, and I'd like to ask, um, Dennis?
So I meant convenient. How much time does he need to get, get the material?
Steve, Dennis, could I ask you, how long do you think you're going to need to communicate to Dana, the powers that be, so to speak, the owners, uh, and subsequently come up with some kind of solution, agreement amongst yourselves, and then revise the plans accordingly?
I guess, when, when's your next meeting?
Um, I, I doubt very much you'll be on our next meeting.
We meet twice a month.
Yeah, we meet twice a month, yeah.
Guess...
April twenty-fourth is the first public hearing for Lisa Lane. Uh, and I believe Sixth Arena Way is coming back on May eighth. So the next full open meeting, if you want to have one public hearing per meeting, is, um, May twenty-second.
Does that work for you?
Kinda far out.
Okay.
What's your timeline?
Then why don't we put you on, on, on May eighth? Does that work for you?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Um, okay, let's say this. I'll take a motion. I will take a motion to continue.
Continue the hearing to May eighth, so move this.
Motion to continue the hearing to seven PM on five, eight thirteen. Motion made by Chris, seconded by Bob. You're right.
Everybody back there got it? May eighth?
Eighteen Roman, no, anyway, um, two thousand thirteen. Call it favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Motion carries unanimously for, is that, uh, excuse me, that's five zero, right?
Yes, I heard, I heard that meant.
Thank you, thank you. Five to zero. Great, thank you, everybody. You're welcome to stay and enjoy the show, but it's a little warm up here tonight. And thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
And, uh, next up is a public hearing continuation for... East Main Street. Do you want, do you need this back now? Recreational facility. Howard, I just sent you my media notes. Okay. Okay. Good, thanks. You're welcome. And in attendance is Lou Mamallet. Hi, Lou.
Lou.
How are ya?
Good, how you doing?
Good, please call me Harry. I'll call you Lou.
Just be careful of the microphone, Lou, that's all. It turns up as a solar flare if you hit the microphone.
And this is, this is a continuation of a public hearing, uh, this is East Main Street facility. Howard, I believe you told me that, um, of course I...
In your supplemental packet?
In my supplemental packet.
You will have a copy of, um, Lou's response to the planning board's technical engineers' first report.
Is that after the blue page?
It's gonna be...
Here we go, practical infrastructure. Uh, one thing I would, before we roll into this, I would very much like to get out of the way. When is, when did we extend the time for this?
To tonight.
To tonight?
Yeah, the tenth.
Okay, so we need a, what is that, a Form H?
Yeah.
Do we have a Form H? Okay, so you're gonna request...
What did you circle, Lou?
Ah, look what you did to the microphone. Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
So you can hear me, you can...
No, it's, everybody can hear you. That's so the folks at home can hear you.
And just for the record, uh, the applicant has requested the extension of time to June thirtieth.
Applicant has requested an extension of time to June thirtieth, twenty thirteen. Can I have a motion? Motion by Chris to extend the time for decision to June thirtieth, twenty thirteen. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Tim? Uh, pretty, pretty upfront. Pretty, pretty upfront. Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, uh, motion carries unanimously 5 to 0. Lou, now that that's done, did you sign that?
It is signed.
It's signed? Thank you. And we'll take care of that. And.
How come we didn't get this earlier than you? You just got it today?
In our supplemental package, right? It comes in after Thursday, right?
Uh, on the 8th.
Okay, that would have been Monday. And I'm, I'm actually surprised it came back as quickly as it did. I'm very glad. And Lou, correct me if I'm wrong. I, again, I, I haven't seen this. And under most circumstances, the less stuff comes in, a week in advance, I don't even want to look at it.
Okay.
But I know this has been, and what I'm seeing here, if I'm not mistaken, is this a response to the review that was done by Larry Graham?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So this has been sent to Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
That's the technical review's engineers' first and first report, and only report.
First report. And we haven't, so he hasn't had time to respond to this?
Right.
Okay. Obviously.
Do we have, do we have a copy of what these? Or have you repeated each one of his?
I have.
Okay.
For the purposes of being able to identify what I'm responding to, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good move. Good idea.
Do you think we should look this over before we release it to Larry again?
Uh, not at all. Uh, this is, this is the engineer and the applicant's response to Larry.
I know. I mean.
I'm wondering if we should go through this bullet point by bullet point or, or if we should just leave this.
I'm certainly hoping that we can at least review. I don't think we have to spend three hours on it or whatever, but if I could have a half an hour to go through the responses here to make sure that I'm on a track that's at least addresses the comments and that the board feels comfortable with. And if they don't, it would be nice to know because it sounds like you're a couple of meetings out on the next hearing. So that will give me the time I need to steer this back into a different direction if that's what I'm given or follow through with, with what I responded.
If you had let the planner know in advance, then.
Well, this is a continuation of the hearing.
We could have come more, more prepared to listen to you.
Well, it's continuation of the hearing.
Well, he's asking for more time than that. He's asking for a half, half hour discussion.
This is only dated two days ago.
I know. I know.
Well, I'm, I'm good with it. Well, how's the board feel? Do we want to go through a few of these?
We're all here.
We're all here.
Well, you can go through in summary. You're not going to get specific too much. Yeah, exactly. I guess what I want, I want to, I want to leave here tonight knowing that it, it appears that I'm pursuing the response to these comments and that what, the way I've identified them is the direction that I'm taking. And if it seems like I'm taking a direction that you don't agree with, then I need to know that.
Well, we don't have the plans, Lou, in front of us, so keep that in mind, that we're just going to be going on here.
These, these are responses to Larry's statements of those plans, right? We have the plans.
I haven't made any changes.
I know we, I know we have the plans, but I don't have them in front of me. Do I have to look up there for what you're talking?
One of the comments is that the plans that I've submitted are hard to read. The best looking set of plans right now is, is the ones up on the wall. And I'm saying that, you know, that's a criticism, criticism of me. So I'm acknowledging clearly that these are the best set of drawings you're going to get a look at.
Okay.
So.
Let's, let's try to move through it quickly. Exactly. Please.
And I can, I will talk fast.
Please.
So the first, the first, the first thing that's asked here is about signing and, and stamping these with, with a PE stamp. I specifically withheld stamping these drawings because I have a big concern that there isn't a whole lot of design criteria that I'm supposed to follow in, in developing these. And that's faced upon what's in the regulations. I believe what I've put to paper makes sense and I believe is, is logical and practical and, and works for the site. But I'm very hesitant to put my stamp on something if, if I'm not following criteria that's established.
I understand.
The, the irony here is, is that the reviewer characterizes these drawings as a, as a concept plan, but then expects me to put my PE stamp on it. So anybody who has a PE stamp knows that you don't put a stamp on a concept plan if you're asking it to be reviewed against criteria that doesn't exist.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a little note to drop?
Sure.
Can I ask you, is, is Larry, and Larry's is, is the non-bold face, right?
Correct.
Okay.
My response is.
All sheets of the plan should be signed, sealed, dated by a registered professional engineer. I, I think maybe we're misinterpreting it. I think Larry means at the end of this process.
Okay. I'm hopeful that that's what he means. Sure.
I, I'm pretty sure that's.
My, my next set will be stamped because I'm going on.
You're going to send in as per these?
Yes, I'm going on the assumption that, that the comments that have been generated, and there were 40 of them, I'm assuming is more than cursory. I, I would expect them to be more than cursory if they're identified differently.
Good. So stamp them before you send them?
Yes.
Are we good with that?
I, I just want to make a note, there's 40 comments if we spend a minute on it.
Okay, yeah, let's roll. How does she?
The next sheet's a typo, which I've made the change.
Oh, you're going to make the change? Okay, good.
The next comment, I used the word variances. I should have used the word waivers. And I will change that and cite the applicable section.
Variances of the ZBA, we do waivers, they do, they do variances, right?
So I will, so I'll make that change. And if, I think that's a good time for me to interject and just say, Lou, where are you with the ZBA's review of, of the?
Oh, excellent question.
Water Resource District.
Yeah, excellent question.
I, I. Have you gotten on their agenda at all yet? I have not gotten on their agenda yet. And I'm hoping to get on their next meeting. So that, that's part of why I really want to go through these.
Okay, cool.
The next comment, and I guess this is, this is sort of make or break right now because we have designed something here that generates very little new impervious areas. The initial submittal that we made to ConCon for a notice of intent with subsequent or concurrent review by DEP yielded comments from the DEP reviewer that said specifically, the only thing they were interested in relative to stormwater management was any new impervious surfaces that were created. So if I were to take the hard line stance, what I would be requesting here is a waiver from stormwater management because this project falls below the threshold where you can, where no stormwater management is required. However.
Under two acres?
I'm sorry?
Are you under two acres? Your impervious area is under two acres?
Yes. The, the specific reference here is, is right in the form, right in the, and by the way, before I go beyond that. We, we haven't eliminated any stormwater management here. We've created a rain garden adjacent to the one impervious area that's, that's more than adequate. And we will demonstrate that by showing the calculations to size that. I guess the, the point is, is I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get.
What is the requested waiver, not variance, but waiver that you're looking for there? For stormwater review? It is a, Larry, Larry seems to be saying it's unlikely we could grow with the requested variant.
Yes, because, because I, because I asked, I asked the board to acknowledge that the stormwater review would be limited to just the new impervious areas that would be created. This is gravel roads, a gravel parking lot, a baseball field. This area is underlaid by sand.
Don't you have to do, excuse me, don't you have to do the existing first before you get a baseline to figure out what you're, if you're going to add to it or not?
I asked.
Maybe I'm not using the correct term.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I, I asked, well, let me, let me try to answer that. This, this is the most important comment. All the rest of these are just, are, are things that can be easily addressed. The most important thing here is that this site sits over material that will pull water into it faster than it will rain under the one-hour peak duration of the 100-year storm. So that's not engineering. That's, water goes out as fast as it will ever come in. And it's in a watershed that has enough storage to more than adequately, even if you dammed off the 48-inch culvert that takes the water out of this basin, there's enough storage in this basin to, to handle all the volume that gets generated from the 100-year storm, not including the fact that the soil drinks it as fast as the water will rain on it.
Don't you need a calculation to prove that?
Honestly, I, I can, I can take all the numbers and shove them through a computer. It spits it out because you've probably seen them before. It spits it out in a bunch of numbers.
Is that what he's referring to though?
TR 50 or?
Isn't that what he's referring?
Or TR 20, a TR.
TR 55 or TR 20.
I think that's what he's looking for, Larry. I think that's.
Yeah.
Right.
But you're asking for that, that waiver?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, is in, in order to adequately do that, the water has to be captured and it has to be capturable and routable.
Right.
And which, which paved surfaces with curbing and drainage and culverts is, is very easy to do.
In order to figure out the volume and the velocity.
You have to catch the volume.
Be able to capture it and channel it somewhere.
And, and that doesn't happen on gravel roads.
Do it on a gravel road.
I mean, everything.
Can't do it on a ball field.
There's no, there's nothing curbing there. And I'm not, I'm not asking for this as a waiver because I'm trying to sneak something by. I guess what I'm asking, first of all, this same exact question is going to be asked by the Conservation Commission after this board.
Right.
So if this board were to kind of move the question to conservation, then at the very least, I, I won't have to answer it again and perhaps in a different way. I can only, I can answer it one way and one way only.
Or if we ask the question and you answer it, conservation can, could say, question's been asked, they did it to the satisfaction of the planning board.
Okay.
Can I ask you this, Lou?
Sure.
If we were building or permitting, excuse me, a, a subdivision, we would ask you to take, if you were, and we were permitting, we would ask you to take every new road, every square foot of that new road, and show us the calculations of every drop and gallon of water that falls on that new road because it's impervious, where it wasn't before. It was pervious before. And we would ask you to show that you were taking all of that, containing it in some way, and holding it on site. And that was, that's really the basis of stormwater management. You're not flooding someone else out.
Right. You're attenuating the flow and.
Attenuating the velocity of the flow. And you're retaining the gallons that are, that are being created.
And if there's a, and if there's a, and if there is a pollutant loading associated with it, which there typically is.
85% DSS removal.
You're addressing the pollutant loading. In this particular case, the site, the, the, the greatest stormwater management is the fact that they have, there's 75-foot buffers of, of vegetated areas to resource areas everywhere.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that in and of itself on what is essentially a flat site means that most of the water is going this way. What little water may want to go this way is going to have to walk its way through 75 feet of vegetated buffer zone before it gets to a resource area, unless it gets to a man-made pond, unless it gets to the man-made rain gardens we're going to have adjacent to the only impervious area being created.
Let me ask you this. Would you be able to show this board, and perhaps any other board, calculations that would show the impervious area you're creating in the, in the skate park? And how you propose to treat it and contain it? Would you be able to show that?
In fact, I'm, I am preparing to submit that exactly. But it's, the idea is, is that it's, what I'm trying.
Would you be able to submit the calculations to that?
Yes, yes. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is.
Isn't that our only impervious surface here? Or, or do we also have to deal with other impervious surfaces?
Well, I believe right now the only impervious surface is the driveway. And the driveway currently discharges to, we're not, I mean, what.
It's existing.
We're essentially, what we're doing is repaving it.
It's existing.
I mean, we're not, we're not adding any newer impervious areas.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
What about where the building is up at the turnaround? We've taken next to the dog park.
No paving there. All gravel.
Yeah, but you're taking a section. Doesn't become impervious when you put a building on it?
Uh, there's no building there.
What building are we talking about?
You didn't show a building?
There were restrooms, okay.
Were there restrooms up there?
No, I didn't see any on this plan.
Okay.
I'm not even sure the town's appropriated enough money to get out that far, so.
Which, which? Good thing you were applying for that $300,000 grant from.
It was there that I thought it was.
Where, where is this building?
It was up by the ball field. Go up to the top with a, big boulders in the middle of the road, the rotary that way.
Oh, right near the church at the entrance? No.
In this, in this picture?
Up by the ball field.
Right. Oh, okay.
Where's the dog park, please?
Two more sheets.
There you go. Yeah. That's the dog park, right?
Yep. And the driveway comes up and does a turnaround, correct?
Correct.
But that's all gravel? That's not impervious?
It's, it's pea stone underlaid by gravel.
So it's pervious?
Correct.
It's not paved.
Well, at the interest of moving along, I would, I would rather ask the Conservation Board, is this statement is correct that you've got here?
It's taken right off of the, it's taken right off of the, of DEP's notice of intent form.
Yeah. WPA Form 3.
Yeah.
Small residential subdivision. From, from my perspective, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, from my perspective, if you could show, instead of showing, I don't know how many acres this whole parcel is.
400.
400 acres of drainage calculations. I, I think the only one that really, in my mind counts is the impervious area of the.
Skate park. DEP essentially said the same thing, so.
Yeah, that's what DEP thinks. I'm, I'm going to fly with that one. That's all I'd require. So if that actually required a specific waiver that you would have to cite in, in the regs what waiver that is.
I don't feel comfortable with it.
I, I just. I understand. I'm just speaking for myself.
I, I'm not convinced of what you're saying because it's kind of new to me for one thing. So don't take that personally. But I just feel like I'd like to find out more about it before I granted it.
Well, let me, let me just say this, is just taking the, the wording here, is what it says is that the threshold is what they call small residential subdivision, less that the threshold is what they call small residential subdivision, less than or equal to four single family houses.
Right.
Okay, so if you, if you think of a subdivision that you would have in front of you with four single family homes, a road in, driv- driveways.
Good bless you.
Um, roof areas, you know, the footprint of the building.
Yeah.
Just think of what the square area, what, what, what the area is associated with that.
God bless you.
Yeah.
The skate park that we're proposing is smaller than that.
Yeah.
And instead of that, in, in a situation like that, you've got water channelizing and, and moving in, in different directions and you have to pick it up and root it because of public safety, because you can't have water sheet flowing across the road. This is sheet flowing to the outside of the, of a skateboard area and being immediately picked up with, with, with stone line channel.
Right.
To bring the water into a rain garden. So essentially, I'm capturing everything that's on that site.
You're capturing it and moving it and, and you're treating it.
Yeah.
Through the soil.
Well, I, I still feel like, Larry ought to be here to explain and concur with this statement.
That's fine.
And, and then I would feel more comfortable doing it.
Okay.
Chris?
Questions?
Um, your feelings on that, or?
Neutral?
Yeah, ain't a neutral.
Eventually Larry's gonna be sitting here.
Yeah, eventually he is. Yeah.
Dress it in.
I don't think we need him.
You, well, do you need firm direction in order to revise your drawings from the board about this? When you go to revise your drawings, do you need to do any additional work?
I'm, if, if, if what I, if, if I don't hear some direction clearly from the board, then I'm gonna assume that I've gotta do drainage calculations for the whole site. So that's.
For four hundred acres versus.
As far as I'm concerned, really, it's just the skate park.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only impervious area that I can see on the plan.
One of the problems, just, let me just, just to put a kind of a finishing note on that. One of the problems is, is trying to define the rooting of the rest of this area. So essentially, this area is outline, outlane, is that the word? The perimeter of this area is seventy-five feet of vegetated buffer and either existing wetlands or manmade ponds. So any water that's not captured here, when it rains there today, or snow melts there today, that's where that water goes. Whatever doesn't perk vertically, which is virtually all of it, would have to make its way to those areas now. So if the, if the drainage calculations for this is to end it there, in other words, whenever you do any kind of drainage calculations, you have to have a system boundary.
Right.
You know, we're on the watershed of earth. And then you zoom into Georgetown, and then you zoom into this four hundred acres. And then you zoom into just the skate park.
Or within two hundred feet of the parcel, et cetera.
So if, if, if the intent is to draw the boundary down to that level, for, for, for floodplain analysis, my boundary goes all the way to North Street because, because the water conveys itself in the, the outlet or the pinch point um, for your time of concentration from the farthest area down to the outlet of the, of the basin, goes all the way to North Street. Right, it's, it's the, it's a forty-eight inch culvert at North Street near Brook Meadow.
The one P had changed last year.
Correct.
Two years ago.
Correct.
Yep.
So.
Forty-eight inch, no.
Yes, from thirty-six, so. That, that alone. That, that alone made it like two and a half times greater in capacity bringing water through there, so.
How, how do we, how do we guide Lou here? Are we making him, uh, he, he sounds like he's requesting, well, let's put it this way. On the plan, on the first page of that plan, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong.
Request.
You have to request that.
Waiver.
Waiver. Okay, and we're gonna put something there that says yes and no.
Okay.
Uh, so we can vote on it at some point.
Okay.
Okay?
But as for direction.
Yeah.
A vote or something on, on that.
Yeah.
Containment area is what you require to proceed.
If there's no further discussion and there's no vote, then I'm not hearing a consensus of what I'm looking for, so I have to go on the assumption.
Four hundred acre thing.
I, I have to go on the assumption that I'm, I'm pulling back and doing calculations on areas that I don't think are necessary. I'm not saying I'm not gonna do them. I'm saying I don't think they're necessary.
Right.
And I'm trying to move this project along, so I need to explain that.
That will help in your coordination with, with the technical review agent too. If he says.
Go to four hundred acres.
Right, well, the, the board has given direction that this is the area that needs to be considered. It's just gonna help.
Yeah.
Right.
If you, if you leave it to.
Well, how do you feel about it? I, I've stated how I, I, I feel we can, we can focus this to the, the skate park till he says.
I say, I say focus it, I say focus it to the skate park.
Tim? Skate park?
Yeah.
Chris? Skate park. Lou, I think you have your direction. I don't think we're gonna go an actual vote for something that we don't have a citation to at this point. The, the waiver hasn't been requested.
I'm not gonna, I.
Right, we didn't do that. The waiver will be requested on the first page, on the very first page.
All waivers.
Got all the waivers you're looking for.
With the site.
Have to, yeah.
By law site, they have to be.
Yeah.
The by law site.
That's fine. Um, I'll move through these quickly.
Thank you. Please.
Number five deals with.
Fifteen minutes, you have thirty.
Yep. Number five deals with general notes. The general note sheet on these drawings, can you flip to that page? It's the second one on that.
General notes have to do with future contract. Yeah, that, that, yeah, square that up, right? You're gonna square that up?
Okay, so the, so the gen- that, that, the section on the left-hand side, um, these are general notes. The, the, this is sort of the, you know, if the contractor for some reason never opens the specifications for the job, these are the absolute things that he absolutely has to know. You, you know, you can, you can walk him through the performance or hold him to performance standards, but these are the absolute things that he has to know, you know, no matter, you know, no matter what. And that, that's why they're general notes. So these are, these are between the town and the contractor once a construction contract is created.
Yeah, it's tough to read without, but the, the bottom one is generally thirty-one notes, and Larry's pointing out that, um, the contractor is responsible for construction activities.
What, what I'm simply saying is that th- these notes are.
Right.
Don't, these, these don't, these notes don't specifically apply to the planning board. Once the planning board issues a special permit, there'll be another note added to that that says that the contractor has to comply with the requirements of the special permit.
I usually see those, the, this, they're pretty much standard.
Right, and that's.
Language.
And that's how it links back. At this point, there's no need to change any of these notes to reflect them back to the purview of the planning board, because until the planning board issues a special permit, they're really not a part of the contract between.
But at the end game, you're gonna fix them.
Absolutely.
Gotcha. So, move on, please.
So the next note was a question about whether the survey was a boundary survey or a topographical survey. And the comment that I made was, the drawing shows bearings and distances and boundaries located in the field, so it should be understood that the base plan was a boundary survey. Uh, the note will be clarif- revised for clarity. Note one identifies that limited to topographic survey was performed.
He wants to clarify what, what type of survey it was.
Identify it as ground level, so he doesn't think that it's aerial. Um, the datum and the mass DOT point ID for where the, where the, uh, where the USGS disc he started with is both located on the drawings.
Great.
Um, there's a question about a stone wall symbol type, which I'll fix. That's number seven.
Number eight?
Number eight, um, is really just a matter of preference. Um, he's suggesting to eliminate some drawings, uh, there, it's not uncommon to have existing conditions.
Four through eight?
Those are the twenty scale drawings of the existing conditions.
Oh, and he's saying it could have been done on a.
Yes.
On a one, uh, on a one to forty scale?
Uh, no, I think he's saying you, you could eliminate, you could eliminate the sheet, all, the sheets altogether and just show the existing conditions, the existing grading, existing contours on the grading plan, which they are.
So you're, you're giving more than we usually see, but.
I'm, I'm, I'm giving what is.
It's wigging them a little.
So thank you.
I'm giving what is.
Thank you. Move on to the next. Yeah, keep giving it. Don't worry about it. Yeah. Express, extraneous information will be, will be.
Changes. Some changes in the, uh, number of decimal places on some contour lines, those changes will be made.
Fixable, right?
Uh, the, the next comment has to do with the clarity of the labels. And, and by the way, the the clarity of all these things is, is being addressed right now. I'm actually having that changed over, so.
I see the next, uh, number eleven and number twelve says these changes we made, these changes.
Your, your wetlands, that's still protected under an ANRAD, or, or the CONCOM doesn't need to verify?
Uh, though, the wetland lines were approved already.
Yeah.
Approved, and you're still protected with that approval.
Yes, correct.
That lasts for three years.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure that was effort.
Yep.
Uh, the next two, the changes will be made.
Yep.
Uh, those are, have to do with.
What's thirteen is talking about the wall there.
Okay, so the comment refers to the fact that there are two details and I only made reference to one of them. One of the details is the wall itself. The other detail that I didn't use a reference to is the capstone on top of the wall, which is next to the other detail. So the ru- the reader's attention is sent to the detail sheet and the extra detail is right next to it. I may have broken a, a rule there or whatever, but I, it's not critical. I'm actually thinking about consolidating the two details as to one.
Okay.
Um.
Sounds like it's gonna be fixed.
This next comment, I have no idea what this was. I, I think the interpretation by the reviewer is that the area where we identified, uh,
Can I see?
Destroying an area with mulch and sodding.
Any idea where these, where this is shown? Stockpile areas for new bark mulch for restoration?
Um, I would say on sheet, C two point one? Yes, zoom in.
Uh, if this is as square as it's gonna get.
Okay.
What do we got there? Any idea where the, uh?
I'll tell you, my computer at home, it looks a little clearer and I'm not sure why. Um, okay, so the area where the, where the, the circular area is, that's basically a grassed area now, yes.
Okay.
Because we're lowering the area, we have a retaining wall there.
Is that the retaining wall?
Uh, the, the, sort of the L-shaped piece there is the retaining wall.
Go ahead.
On the backside of the L.
What's that?
Yep, that'll be, that'll be sodded. On the front side, it will be, it'll, it'll be mulch.
Okay.
So.
What's Larry saying about a pile?
He would, he, the, whoever reviewed this thought that those were stockpile areas for the material. And then do not. I mean, the one thing we have on the site is plenty of room to stockpile material outside of wetland buffer, uh, buffer zones.
Oh, and you're saying the que- the area question is not intended as a stockpile, it's an area where the new work is proposed?
Right. I think he misunderstood the notation.
Okay, it sounds like a misunderstanding.
Okay.
Sounds like you rectified it.
Right. Um, the next two areas we're evaluating is, he's asking about a, again, these are, these are references to details.
Okay.
So we'll clean that up.
Okay.
Um.
Next three, right? We're back to knock down eighteen?
Yep. Okay, so the next question has, is, uh, he's asking about why we selected concrete instead of uh, asphalt sidewalks. Um, we talked about it with the Park and Rec, and their choice was to go with concrete sidewalks.
Right.
Um, we are actually gonna add granite curbing in front of the sidewalk areas, from the station that's shown. Um, the area beyond five plus eighty-five, what we've talked about doing is separating the road from the sidewalk.
Five plus eighty-five?
Yes.
Station five, so we're talking from the street.
Five hundred, five hundred and eighty-five.
Five hundred and eighty-five feet in.
In, okay.
Okay.
Okay. And the rationale for that is, is a couple of things. The first one is, is.
Is that near, is that near the parking lot?
Uh, no, it's sort of near the, uh, where the kids play U eight soccer.
Oh, that far back?
Uh, that's closer to the street.
Right.
Go back one more sheet.
Can, can I ask you, just roughly, how far is it from the street to the parking lot? Roughly. We're talking fifteen hundred feet?
About a.
Thousand?
About a thousand.
Thousand feet. This is about halfway up the road.
Yes.
What are we doing to the, um?
So.
The curbing?
So the idea, uh, one of the other comments in here is, is there was a question about the proposed grading and it suggested that the, because the grading, the proposed grading line stopped at the edge of the road and didn't jump up on, onto the curb. I've made some corrections to show that. But the question then came up about reveal on the curb.
Hmm.
There's a detail that shows a curb with reveal, meaning the difference between the elevation of the road and the elevation of the top of the curb or the sidewalk.
Hmm.
When you get further down the road, there's no real sense here if ever in the future this road will ever be uh, improved beyond a gravel surface. And so the idea of making a, um, a, a pedestrian access adjacent to vehicular access, there, there's kind of a challenge there, because typically what you would do is have a reveal on the curb, so there's sort of a, the, that, that change in elevation, the, the reveal off is sort of a bumper to, to tires, so that there's a clear separation. Um, when you start getting into that, in order to do that, you'd have to make the sidewalks a lot thicker, or you'd have to install granite curbing. Because it's, because I'm trying to do this in such a way that I guess respects the fact that there may not be a whole lot more money ever put into this road, I wanted to stop at some point with sort of the conventional granite curbing sidewalk and transition to just a sidewalk. The only way to really do that effectively without creating that reveal issue is to make a grass buffer away from the road, so that the, so that the sidewalk acts more like a, like a golf cart path, you know, at, at a golf course.
What does that do for ADA?
Um, I don't think it changes anything for ADA, because the surface is still, is, is still handicap accessible. It's still a continuation of the sidewalk.
Right.
Um.
Lou, if I can just, I think what you're saying is, is it, when you have that reveal, you have the physical separation between pedestrian vehicular use.
Where, where the cars and the, and the, and the pedestrians are closer together.
What you're proposing at the gravel.
Yes.
Is the separation goes like this.
Correct.
Where you have, that vertical is now the grass strip.
Exactly.
And you have your physical separation through a horizontal.
Correct. And there's no need for a reveal. That changes things like, um, if there's any sheet flow of water off the road, which again, because it's a gravel road, there should be virtually none.
Hmm.
But if there is anything there, you're not gonna have any kind of, uh, you know, erosion underneath the, underneath the sidewalk. You're not gonna have to have the sidewalk be thick enough to have a reveal and then have to excavate next to it to install curbing to, to then pave the road if the town ever decided to pave it, which I realize would result in coming back before the board again, but again.
Every board again.
Right. Understanding the idea that there's only a limited amount of money has been put forth for this project.
Yeah, but how safe is this, Joe? Lou?
That's okay. Um, how, how safe is having no reveal? Well, see, it's easy, because you guys all have them. I don't, so. Um, the idea is.
That's the thing.
I, I, I think.
We wanna know which is the safest and which is the best. You're expecting kids to ride bicycles up that sidewalk?
I think, I think both are equally safe. Uh, and my personal opinion is, is I think a five-foot separation from the sidewalk to the road is safer.
Right.
Than granite curb with a reveal of six inches, where the cars can basically be inches away from the sidewalk.
Right, because a kid can stray off his left five foot and pull back on the sidewalk.
Exactly.
Falling off the sidewalk.
Exactly. And the fact that it saves the town money and.
Lou, we're gonna see this in the, in the next rev?
Yes, you are.
We're gonna be able to visually see this on the plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll see what Larry's response to this is.
Okay.
At some point, right?
Yes, the next comment.
You good with that?
Sorry. The next comment is, um, I'm gonna change the annotation, because I think there's some cute confusion there, to concrete crosswalk.
Petuminous crosswalk?
No, to concrete crosswalk.
Concrete crosswalk?
Those were the areas where we talked about the entrance and exit to the parking area, having a continuation of, of an ADA surface from the sidewalk in. So it'll basically be beveled down, concrete crossing and back up.
And then up.
Yep.
Nice.
Uh, the next two things are.
Changes will be made.
Yep, continuing twenty-two, same thing. Twenty-three, uh, it asks for, or it says that a roadway profile plan would be helpful. The, um, the drawings have existing grading, proposed grading, and slopes shown on the drawings.
Is there, isn't there a requirement that we have a roadway profile? Isn't that a requirement in our?
Is there a requirement for this type of project?
Right, that's because, the reason we have that is because we do drainage, because we have to have the roadway profile to see the catch basins on that profile, to see the drainage. To see if the, if the catch basins are at the right elevation. And there are no catch basins. So we don't need one. You have the roadway profile, then you see all the catch basins and the tie-ins to the catch.
Are you, are you gonna be providing any type of, uh, grading plan or anything?
You need it.
I'd like the. Not, not in terms of a, of a roadway profile, but in plan view, the grading will be there, right?
Grading is on the, the three series, the C three series, these, that's the grading plan.
Um, it's been suggested by, by, by Chris. That, um, we let Larry explain why he feels it would be helpful.
Sure. Sure.
Um, because it is something he's saying would be helpful, but where you don't have, where you don't have any drainage piping or structures, I don't know why...
My experience...
And I'm sure he's got a reason. I'm sure he's got a reason.
My experience with Larry Graham is he doesn't do things, review plans to create work.
Yep.
Not being able to look into his mind and, I mean, maybe it's not adequately...
Described here?
Described here for all of us to just have it fall off the page to us.
Yeah.
Out of respect for Larry, I'd like to know.
Let's see what he comes back to. I mean, I'm sure he's gonna, uh, you're asking that the comment be set aside, and yeah, I'm sure he's gonna reply to that, right?
The, um, the next, next comment?
You're gonna do it? You're gonna show, uh, twenty-four, you're gonna show the details?
Yeah, the deep, um, in the plan view, basically what I, if you, if you zoom into here, and again, I know you... Okay, so what you see here is, is diagonal lines that come across the road, those are the proposed grades.
Right.
Well, that's interesting, because they, they do seem to jump up on the sidewalk, so I'm not sure what the comment was. Because I think the question was, the grades don't seem to reflect on the sidewalk. You know, the contour should be in, in, right up here
Yeah.
between, as opposed to going straight, that's...
Yeah, I bet you...
Either showing it as a foot or showing it as flush.
I think what they, you know, no, what they should be is, is hitched over, given the fact that there's six inches of reveal there.
Right.
So, it should be hitched over to the sort of the middle, and that's, change has been made. But, again, if you look at the detailed drawing, when somebody's putting the curbing in, they're grading the base road in and then going to the detail to figure out what the reveal is. So, that, that's, uh, a contractor would be able to build it without making a change, but the change has already been made, so...
Okay, so you already made it. Great. Uh, three hundred feet of roadway, Main Street appears to be pitched. Area in question is already attributable to East Main Street. That's basically what we talked about before.
Correct.
You're not changing any of the runoff.
Correct.
Okay.
Um...
What's twenty-seven dealing with? Blend grade to meet the existing grade.
Okay, so, that, of all the comments that were made, that one, that one is, I would say, is the most solid in terms of evaluating the design, because he picked up on something there that, uh, that, that could be a little bit of a problem, and it has to do with grading back to the area behind, uh, the United Foam building, on the backside of the slope. So, there's two solutions to that. First of all, the, the, the first solution could be, like, what I see in my mind is, is that the slopes aren't quite as steep as the program generated from the topographical data that was shot there. If you, and, if you can understand the, you go out and take a bunch of survey points, and those survey points act to a perimeter. So, when you get outside the data points, the software starts kinda jiving things back together to where it figures out it runs out of data. Okay, so that's right along the edge of where that information is, and I think the computer depicts it a little bit steeper than it actually is. And again, that's only because I've walked down there five thousand times.
Maybe you and Larry need to take a walk out there.
Sure, sure. But, but the, but the, but the alternate to that, if it in fact is as steep as the, what can happen is, is you can move the road over more towards the middle of the fifty-foot right away that we have in there
Right.
to have some room to blend it back at a smoother contour, so that there is no steep drop-off.
So, you have a solution?
We have a solution.
Great.
Okay.
Glad to hear that.
And that was a very helpful comment, uh, because I didn't see that and he did...
He's a pretty sharp guy, ain't he?
All respect.
He's a pretty sh- pretty sharp guy. Transition shown on twenty-two, which is the mid... Uh, he's saying that something should be shown on sheet seventeen, and you're showing it on sheet, sheet C two dot two, right?
Yeah, I, I think that was just something that he was looking at the wrong drawing, but the information is already there.
So, you've already provided the, and now he knows where to find. Okay, good.
Um, next...
Quick wrap slope, level spreader, low point, six hundred foot of roadway.
Yep, that, that's, that's being addressed.
Okay, great.
The next item has to do with, if you can go back over to the skateboard park drawing, uh, no, you know what? You're on three point three. Can you go back to two point three? Okay, so if you see the, the, the skateboard park, um, if you look at the top of the skateboard park, the outer lying band, okay, those, those outer lying bands of material, ones are...
This?
Yeah, one is a crushstone apron, and the other one is a grass channel. Those will be extended further down to pick up the low point of the grading for the parking area, because the comment was any sheet flow that comes off the parking area isn't being intercepted. Again, this is a relatively flat area, it's one percent slope. But those, those areas will be extended over, so that they do intercept any flow that would come through there.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna make that change?
Correct.
Great.
They did, I didn't extend them initially, because again, I'm not expecting a lot of runoff from an area that's impervious.
That's pervious.
So, when it says hundred sixty...
It's pervious.
Plus, times two hundred feet plus, is that even?
Plus or minus.
Yeah.
About a hundred and sixty feet by about two hundred feet.
So, okay.
That's the reference to the dimensions of the parking area.
Well, how come it, it, there's such a difference between a hundred and sixty and two hundred, if you're saying it's nothing? That's, that's forty.
It's not the difference, it's one sixty by two hundred.
Right, it's a hundred and sixty feet.
One sixty long, two hundred wide.
Yeah, two hundred, one sixty.
So, what, you don't know what the grading is, or you're just saying that it's just not too much?
The grade, the grading on the grading plan shows it at one percent slope. The comment is...
One percent slope?
Yes. The comment is that the, uh, can you go to three point three?
You just can't, it's ridiculous.
No, but the question was asked, and I'm trying to answer it. Make all your hair? Okay, so if you zoom into the top corner there, what you see is, uh, the contour, uh, slide over just a little bit. Okay, so, you see that, that's a contour line, and if you look...
That's eighty-eight right there.
Yeah, and the next one above it should be eighty-nine.
Yep.
And there should be a little arrow right next to the eighty-nine that says one percent. Okay, so that's the, okay.
That's the crosswalk.
So, if you're looking at the, the, the grading pitching to that area, if you extend then around, you will pick up right where, where the, uh, where the cursor is. I'm extending the, the, the stone and the grass line channel over to that area to pick up.
To grab that, grab any of the waters that may go there.
Necessary, I'll bring it to the whole end, but it's probably not necessary.
It's a channel with grass?
Correct.
So, it just...
AKA grass whale.
Yeah.
Country drainage.
AKA country drainage, yeah.
On the structure. Okay, great, so...
Sounds like a plan.
The next question had to do with snow plowing, and...
Why are we gonna be plowing?
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, the truth of the matter is, is nothing that we're proposing is a winter activity, so my expectation is that there would be no snow plowing. If the town does decide they wanna do something out there, there's plenty of room in the center of that area where they could stockpile snow, so that it, that they're not in any buffer areas. But again, I don't think that's even...
Would, would we really be plowing a thousand feet of roadway, so that somebody could go?
Snow, she can walk their dog. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not going to operate, I'm not, listen, I'm not gonna operate the facility, but the concern about the snow, stockpiling, is that it's not in a buffer zone. And there's plenty of area in the center of this parking lot that isn't in the buffer zone.
So, what's the, what's wrong with making a mark on the plan, saying that's where the snow should go? If in fact you did do it?
I, I could do that.
Lou, could he be talking about the amount of driveway you're gonna be using that's, that is gonna need to be plowed to get to the church parking lot?
Well, we've always, well, we don't always, but my understanding is that ever since the town bought that driveway, if you will, we've been plowing it.
I understand that.
It is the town road now.
May- maybe you could ask Peter where he puts it now.
Do you think Larry might be asking that question?
Yeah.
Because that's really the only area that is gonna be plowed.
Yeah. Why don't you ask, why don't you, why don't you ask Peter where he puts it now?
I, I will, if I, if I were, if, I will, and if I were to take a wild guess, I'd say he probably takes a swing around the backside of the existing parking lot and probably helps out the church a little bit, and also makes a way to turn himself around and get some, but I will consult with Peter.
Yeah, check with, check, see what Peter says. That might be the easiest, quickest, most practical way of, instead of doing a satellite study.
Sure. Um, we have to show a gate on the dog park, which apparently is not on there.
It's for dogs that know how to jump. You're gonna make the change. Gotcha?
Uh, yes, um...
Responses? What, what's, what's, what's going on? Larry jumped from thirty-three to thirty-eight?
Well, I think that, I think the next comment, well, yeah, I mean, thirty-three is, I think, is just an overall comment. Uh, thirty-four through thirty-seven, I think he, somebody just missed some numbering or whatever, uh, because it jumps to thirty-eight.
Okay.
Um, the question for thirty-eight was that sheet twenty-six was unnecessary, and sheet twenty-eight, if you go to...
Sheet twenty, Larry's saying sheet twenty-six?
I'm sorry, twenty-six. He, when he refers to sheet twenty-six, by the way, he's talking about the twenty-sixth sheet in the drawing set, and in the bottom right-hand corner, next to the number of the drawing, is a little kinda diagonal box that shows you, you know, it's sheet like twenty of twenty-seven.
Is that this one, the, the...
Yes.
That tells us which one, the...
Yeah, so that's a, basically a sign summary.
Yeah.
And that sign summary is consistent with what's called MUTCD, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Isn't that the one we asked you, um, to tell us what the, the references on the plan were for the signs? Is that the one that shows the signs?
Ye- yes. I have a copy of the...
Can, can I see that for a second?
Yeah, I have a copy of the manual, it's like this thick.
Yeah.
And I don't think, um, most contractors don't have that, so typically what you do is just put a legend on there showing the specific ones you need
Right.
so as to not need the big binder.
We use that sheet, Lou.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's another thank you, Lou.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's unnecessary, but thank you. Good point.
What I don't wanna do is take this off, because then what happens is the contractor doesn't have an easy way to figure out what signage he needs, and given that there's not a whole lot of road striping here, signage is pretty much the way you'll understand how to use this room.
The more you reduce reference to external documents, the more it's self-contained.
Yeah.
I agree.
The more clear it is.
Agreed. Um, the last comment about the drawings was...
Blank?
The last sheet was blank, which it was left blank specifically, because I knew there'd be more details needed, and more details have been asked for.
IBM always used to say, "This page intentional."
I didn't leave, I didn't actually, I didn't actually write that, but that was the intention, believe it or not, and so the requested extra details, we'll be going there.
Excellent, okay.
Um, the last part has to do with the stormwater report, which again, goes back to the comments about...
It should be signed and stamped and dated, and you're gonna do that. You're gonna provide all the information, and page...
And I think that's all I have.
Yeah, there's a comment in here that, uh...
Are you talking about this one, page two?
Bullet point down the bottom.
Yeah, that bottom one, I'm, I'm not...
Suggest development of some cooperative final design and consensus between the applicant, owner, planning board, and perhaps ourselves. This deviates from the normal process. Normally, the applicant designs and submits.
Yeah.
I don't, I really don't want it to be construed in any way, shape, or form. At least, it's my opinion, that the planning board is designing this park.
What if any design guidance has been offered, either in writing or in...
Well, we'll make that suggestion, we'll rule it, but we're not designing it.
I, I, I hear this all the time, and, and I think the perception is, is that by offering, with all due respect, of my understanding, and I've sat on boards, is if you have an opinion, you are part of the process. It's still up to me to put it to paper, and it's still up to you to approve it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and I don't think that's lost in this.
Are, are you gonna...
I think this might, that comment somehow puts us all at the same table, doing what you're doing, and I don't want people to think we are.
As a citizen of the town,
You are?
and this is specifically speaking as a citizen of the town, I would hope that me representing one board, there actually would be some of that consideration, giving at least i- i- insofar as to think we're all on the same team. With that said, we're still going through a process for permitting, and we're still required to do that. So, that's just me speaking as a citizen.
Well, let me tell you what my feelings are about people who say we're all on the same team. I've heard that a number of times in this town. And believe me, it's the most abused statement, 'cause their definition of the same team, and I think where we are right here with this project, are two totally separate definitions. Are we all on the same team in this room? I think we are, comfortably.
Sure.
We want, all want this to happen, we all want it to happen right.
Trust us.
We're from the government, we'll help you.
Uh, Lou, it sounds like those two last bullet points, well, the, 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 the second to last bullet point, sounds like you're gonna provide the additional information, right?
Yes.
And we already gave you our, our, um, comments about the, the management plan, right?
Yep.
The stormwater management plan. Is there, um, is there anything else?
I, I do have just one question about the amount of, the amount of pervious, uh, sidewalk. How, how much is that? I know it's spread out, it's a ribbon, so it's not like a big block.
It's, uh, let's, we'll say it's an average of five feet wide. Mostly, most areas it's four, but there's some areas where we widened it out around the back of the ballpark. Um, so, just for round numbers, we'll say five times, I think it's fifteen...
Fifteen hundred.
Hundred? So, seventy-five hundred, yes. Seventy-five hundred square feet.
Still less than a quarter of an acre.
All right. Yeah, and I, I, again, there would be no, and that's, see, there's the challenge, there's no way to capture that.
Right, right.
I mean, it's...
It's gonna fly off one way or the other, depending on the slope, right?
I, I think that's what I tried to say in the end of the letter here. The proposed project is a bit unorthodox when compared with a typical subdivision. I've been saying that to myself every night before I go to bed. Just so when I wake up, I remember that.
If we ever get a subdivision, an honest-to-god subdivision, that deals with serious porous pavement, we're not gonna know how to, how to do these calculations. I've been thinking about this. We're not gonna know how to do the calc's. Mark my words. If we get a subdivision that does porous pavement, we're not gonna know how to calculate it, because you're not gonna be able, you're gonna have the same problem, you're not gonna be able to capture this to figure out where it's going.
Now, there's a workshop tomorrow.
Oh, what a segue. What a segue I just handed you, Tilly.
Perhaps you will get more knowledge, and it's a free one at the Topsville Fair, given by Parker River and Ipswich River Watershed. And, and if you're welcome, in the morning, eight-thirty.
Free lunch?
Yep, free lunch.
Wow. Uh, I, I believe we have a, a, is everyone else made their comments, because I, I think I see a member from the public?
Yeah, Richard Averman from the, uh, Park and Rec Radio Commission.
Uh, would you state your address, sir?
One ninety-nine West Main Street.
Come on up.
Just kind of, uh, we, we're, uh, with the Park and Rec Department, we're really trying to get a sense of how long this process is anticipated to go, with due respect for the process itself, but also recognizing that there are many questions being asked in town about where we are with this process, where, when we're gonna start breaking ground. And I know it's, it has to run its course, but is there any sense that you can give me in terms of where we're at and how much longer this is gonna take?
Um, shall I field that one? If you're referring to the overall process of the planning board, that's one thing. If you're referring to the overall process of receiving any and all permits that you need before you can say, uh, "Mr. Farrell, will you put this out to bid for us?"
Right.
Then I can assure you, you will have a decision from the planning board, from what I understand, long, long before you are ever at the point where you've gotten through ZBA and CONCON, which I would respectfully say are your two girls. That will take much longer than this planning board, in my opinion, and it's only an opinion.
To answer the first part of your question, when all of the documents that are required are in the condition that is required are submitted, this board will, I'm sure, will not waste any time dilly-dallying over irrelevant and just time-consuming subjects. We operate, and I'm convinced, this board, as a president who sits, is probably the most expeditious board in town. To say, to ask that question, "How long is it gonna take?", you guys drive the timeline. It's not this board.
Well...
Can't come in and say, "This is what we think we're gonna do", and show us pictures, and then say, "Okay, maybe we'll do it this way". It's gotta be, "This is the way it's gonna be, the way we want it done". Give us the... gonna be, the way we want it done." Give us the ruling.
Right. I understand that.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Are we making-
Are you making progress? Absolutely, you're making progress.
Um, I don't know if you've, you were privy, um, Rich, to, um, the very, very comprehensive response that Lou just gave to Larry Graham, who's our review engineer, but that response goes to Larry. Lou will be providing some more revisions of plans to Larry, incorporating all of his comments and what we've ju, the, the guidance we've just given him. How long that will take, again, i- it sort of falls back to Lou. How long it's gonna take to generate those plans? Might take him two weeks, might take him a month. I don't really know. Um, again, on top of that, on our side of the game, how long is it gonna take from the day Larry gets those to review them? These took a little while to review from Larry's perspective. I, I see it in the comments. I see it in, um, you know, things like missing numbers. I see that. He was very busy with seven, with six near no way. He was doing a couple of different things, so I can read it in the, because I've read many of his responses before, many of his replies. How long is that gonna take, Larry? No, no, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
Did you see Larry's first response?
We reviewed it at, uh, previous Park and Rec meeting, yes.
But the process is Lou gets those back, uh, gets those to Larry. Larry will again comment, again comment, and at that point, we'll have the benefit of seeing those comments. Lou will come in. Uh, I would hope that the board would wanna have Larry at that meeting-
Absolutely.
-at that point, and, um, then we hammer it out. Go for waivers. That'll be the night you get a waiver. As long as you don't call it a variance.
Well, again, I respect the process. Um, you'll forgive me if it's a bit frustrating from our perspective, just in terms of, uh, what he thinks is the bill.
We spent a lot of time.
From our perspective.
Spent a lot of time.
We've been looking at- You know, look at, look at what, what Lou's already done. I mean, compared to the first time Lou came before us, he is light years past that.
Right.
Light years.
I'd like to just point out that the first three times Lou came to us, he came to us in an informal basis.
We don't need-
There was nothing we could do other than say, "Pretty colors. You stayed in the lines." Can't do anything on an informal basis. It's a waste of time.
Yeah, the longest wait-
We, we really had hoped that the board would have given us, I guess, a little bit more clarity in terms of what, what was needed, so, and I understand your position.
I need to address that.
I understand your position, Mr. Ray.
We have rules and regulations. We have forms-
I understand.
That this board has to look upon you guys as just another developer, 'cause if we do it for you, when ABC Inc. comes in to do something else, they're gonna say, "Past practice. You've done this." Again, we're not designing the park. You guys wanna build it? Give us your best design. We'll tie you if it flies or not. It's only fair to us.
We spent a lot of time helping.
Yeah, much more than we would have with any developer. Only because of that guy over there. He carries a big bat.
But it's your park. It's your park. Build it the way you want, and if we see anything that, that isn't safe or doesn't work in the regulations, then, then we're gonna say, "Sorry. Well, we've gotta figure out a solution," and I think, you listened to a lot of what Larry was saying.
It's an unorthodox project.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we really are trying to expedite it.
I appreciate that, and, uh-
Appreciate your patience.
Look at the work this guy's got into it. I mean, we're talking-
I know.
On page twenty-eight.
See, see, two-point-twenty-one.
And mark my words, you'll have a permit from this board before you have the other ones you named.
Thank you very much.
Mark my words. Um, I thought I saw a hand.
Yeah, I just want Elizabeth Wade, twenty-seven Nelson Avenue. Uh, I just-
Good, Wendy?
So, in theory, if Larry, if Lou draws, sends to Larry the next meeting that Lou appears at, Larry will be present to go over it all, and in theory, the permit could be, um, could be issued at that point in time.
It could be that one or the one after. I can see that happening if everything's together.
It was in the next meeting or two.
Mm-hmm. I can see that, I can see that happening.
Well, we just granted a continuation until what day? June?
No, we, that was an extension of time.
Sensitive time.
That was a Form H extension of time.
The board needs to vote now for when the continuance is gonna-
When's all the public comments taken?
Kind of time you need to get- To get Larry his information.
Am I expected to go and meet with Larry to review these things any further, or how does, what is your expectation that I do?
When would you like the next, what, what's next, what meeting would you like to appear at next?
What, what is the next meeting that you have?
Well-
Uh, five-twenty-two, six-twelve, or six-twenty-six?
Five-twenty-two.
But we have publicly- I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, that's where we wanna go for the very next meeting.
No.
I think what we need to do is, you know, we have to, we have to ask Lou how long it's gonna take you to draw your new drawings.
I just did that. How long is it gonna take?
Well, then we have to add-
Less than five-twenty-two, and five-twenty-two is the next meeting?
Right, but you, you need to revise the drawings, get them to Larry. Larry needs to review and get comments from the board.
Needs to review too, so we have to allow that time. We've gotta get Larry to it.
Okay, so, so what's the one after five-twenty-two?
Uh, six-twelve.
I guess that's the meeting.
And what did we just extend to? Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll accept the motion to move, to continue-
Second.
-the hearing until seven PM on June twelfth. Isn't that, okay, two thousand thirteen? So, that was made by Chris, was seconded by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
You're gonna start tracking through the ZBA too, Lou, right?
Yeah.
At the same time as the planning board. You're not gonna wait for the planning board.
Yeah, you don't wanna hold off. The, the one thing you definitely don't wanna do is run this in a, in a serial fashion, where you're waiting until you're holding the permit from one board to go to the next board.
Parallel processing.
Parallel processing. You wanna be in front of the CONCOM. Once those, once those plans go, you wanna be in front of the CONCOM. You need to be in front of the ZBA.
What can they propose on the board, the floodplain?
Floodplain?
Yes.
They only meet once a month.
Despite the fact that the project isn't in a floodplain, we need a floodplain permit.
Is part of the parcel in the floodplain?
That can be cleared if one-
Not if you know what a floodplain is, and not if Beamer was the only source of data referenced in the town's floodplain district.
Sounds like you're dealing with the ZBA, and we're not gonna presume anything.
You have to, you have to compare the elevations to the bylaw, the number of it.
Right, but the elevations in the bylaw are wrong.
Well, that's what you've gotta show them.
Motion's been made, and we're continuing the hearing now, right?
You can convince them that you, that the, the numbers are incorrect, then they can grant it.
I will be doing that.
Or they can just give you a permit for doing very, very little. They could just give you a permit for it, 'cause there's actually an exemption for recreational.
Except for the fact that we're supposedly bringing in materials, and that's, that's the earth kick.
Oh, the grass?
Who said you have to go see them? John Metvier?
Yes, yes.
You, you asked about whether you should maybe talk to Larry before the meeting. It's probably gonna be hard. You guys come in on the same thing, so everything goes a little slower.
Absolutely. You're not, you're not in a soundproof booth. I mean, you're, you're free to call Larry. He's a, he's a fellow engineer. I mean-
I appreciate that.
You're gonna have a cup of coffee with the guy. It's not a conflict of interest in any way. Two engineers talking. Happens all the time. Usually the engineers go and resolve these problems, and we don't even read this stuff.
Thank you.
Out loud at a meeting.
Good night.
Okay, we've taken, what am I looking at here? This is different. What, I don't have, okay, that's the old agenda. Okay, uh, we've taken care of the two public hearings. Uh, are there any other concerns of a board member or a member of the public? Miss, you've been in this audience all night. What's going on?
I'm just a, um, a resident on Lisa Lane. I'm just interested in hearing what you have to say about that.
Oh, well, we're gonna deal with that right now. Um, the DHCD conference, Tilly, is that?
No.
Is that different?
That's what I requested the forty-five dollars to attend.
Oh, okay, we've dealt with that.
That's the planning, yep.
Okay, Lisa Lane, preliminary subdivision plan submittal. Howard, my understanding is we-
The applicant provided, uh, copies of a preliminary plan-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to update their OSRD, um, application requirements. So, the material that was provided in your packets is a letter from the attorney explaining the purpose and intent of those plans being given to the board, um, and they're also being given to the board ahead of the first open session, the first, uh, public hearing of the Lisa Lane application.
So that will be for the OSRD hearing on-
April twenty-fourth.
Four twenty-four thirteen, and it's essentially-
I'll be providing a planner's report, 'cause I'm looking into it a lot more.
Okay, and, and you've looked, and just for clarification, only 'cause you're here, when you do an OSRD special permit, uh, which they have applied for, uh, one of the things that you have to do, or you're allowed to do if you so desire as the applicant, is to present, uh, a preliminary standard subdivision plan. Uh, when you do that, under the OSRD special permit, you're allowed, we're, we are actually required to bifurcate the hearings, to hold the two hearings together at the same time. So, this has been submitted, and to your knowledge, is it complete?
Yes.
Okay, and so, we're not gonna discuss this, because to do that, uh, any of the merits or anything about this, uh, that's not right. This, this hearing opens-
I recorded in the minute, uh, minutes from the last meeting that it was discussed a little bit, so I just-
I think what was discussed was that-
But I'm sorry, it might have been two meetings.
They, they did submit some information to us, and we expected some more.
Okay, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to be present to hear what you had to say if you did happen to discuss it.
Okay.
That's great.
The, the application is in the planning office. You can look at it, and if you have other questions, come in and talk about it.
I have no objections. I just-
Okay.
You're being a good citizen.
Do I get a prize for that? Is that like a prize?
Sure, you can, you can be an associate planning board member right at the selectment. They'll put you right on. We can use one.
It's a fun team.
Just so you know, are you in a butter?
Uh, yeah.
You are? You were notified? You were notified that your, the hearing starts on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
That's when we're gonna discuss that.
Have you seen what they wanna do?
Yeah.
You have?
I've seen both plans. Aren't there two plans?
Yes.
Yeah.
I was gonna let you take my packet, if you hadn't seen it.
I don't have a hard copy. I just have a little email one, so I, I-
You have, just have a little email one?
Yeah.
Well, this is public knowledge now.
You can take this if you want, review it, and come by Town Hall and just drop it off at Howard's, and he'll get it back to me.
Mine is hard to read, so it's probably better.
Probably a little bit better.
And bear in mind, that is a preliminary plan. That is not the, um-
That's not the final.
That's not-
Because there's two plans in there.
Yeah, and the, that, that's the preliminary-
That's just the preliminary.
That is the preliminary filing. That is what someone files when they are going for a standard subdivision approval, okay?
Did you get your name?
Not the OSRD.
I don't think I did. Did I get your name? No, Jill Osborne, eighteen Lisa Lane. Jill Osborne?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Jill has, uh, we, we've complied with her public, you know, information request. Thank you, Jill. Um, responses to various inquiries of the planning board members at the last meeting. Do, uh, we want to discuss these, or do we wanna read them in our-
Those are all provided in your supplemental package.
In our supplemental package, and discuss them at another time.
Well, I have a question.
Go for it.
Have we communicated to Town Council all of the requests?
Yes.
Want to bet?
I do, 'cause I do wanna bet.
What do we?
'Cause I haven't seen it.
Okay.
They're in your supplemental package.
Where's the supplemental package?
And I intentionally waited until the minutes were done, so I could clear understanding of the motion.
Fair enough.
And so, you hadn't seen one until tonight.
My back's been up in the air.
I didn't hear what the wager was gonna be for.
Well, not if you put a supplemental. As of the time you're, as of the time I picked up my packet.
You hadn't received them all?
No, I hadn't.
But as I understood, you were asking if we've received all the comments, all the responses back, and we have.
Well, you know, we get things out electronically fast enough, but when did we receive it?
This afternoon.
And it looks like this-
Here's my supplemental. We're-
It looks like it's right here.
There, there are a number of different, there's something from, uh, John about Munns, and something from Mike Farrell about planning board agenda clarification.
In order, you should have Lou Mamellet's letter. You should have, the first email will be, um, the response, uh, that I received back for my inquiry about, uh, using the word "vote" in the description of an agenda item. The next page will be back about, um, school building committee, uh, requests, uh, about the school building committee being advisory.
Limited site plan approval.
Uh, can we back up a little bit here? The, um, the word "vote" is not to be requi- required to be in the agenda.
We are gonna discuss this tonight, huh?
I would invite my colleagues to look at the video of that, and that's not what was stated at the meeting.
Page we're on.
Howard, I'm looking at Mike Farrell's email.
I'm looking at John Metvier.
Subject, "Replanning Board Agenda Clarification," is what I'm-
I'm looking at John Metvier.
And I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Farrell's "I see no reason to engage legal counsel." Unfortunately for him, and fortunately for us, he doesn't have a vote on this board. So I hope if this board asks you to do something, it doesn't get stopped at Mike Farrell.
Well, with all due respect, Chris, from the way I'm reading this, Howard was asked to send in a, uh, an email.
I think Howard sent the email and copied it to Michael.
Well, he sent it, and he sent it to, he did send it to John Eichmann.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the administrator being copied on anything.
I, I can tell you, as chair of CPC, there has been a longstanding policy, and I don't know how it works with the Board of Health, but there's been a longstanding policy in this community since, I wanna say, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, that when you contact Town Council as a board member, and I've done it, I've had to contact John several times, that you, you CC Mike Farrell.
I just said, I have no problem copying the administrator.
Right.
But, I mean, that's his opinion. He doesn't see any reason, but that should not stop a request of this board. And I just wanna make sure that we understand that. Does everybody compare with me?
Are you saying that you're not-
It's in the bylaws that a board or commission cannot contact Town Council without review of or approval of the selectmen.
Access the Town Council.
I don't think that's exactly what it says.
Access the Town Council. It's controlled by them.
Anyway, we're an elected board. The Board of Selectment doesn't run us, doesn't control us. We don't work for them.
Section one-twenty-five of the bylaws.
I think there is a bylaw that, that limits the access of-
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel to be through the Board of Selectment.
I know that the selectmen are responsible for it.
Well, if the Board of Selectmen, I don't-
That you had to notify them. I didn't, I never saw that.
Yeah, I would, uh-
They pay the legal bills, but that's, that's, that hasn't happened, because they've changed that somehow, um, dividing up. The land use get their bills, and whoever is using it gets their bills, and-
If that's the case, I would like to see Michael Farrell's written requests to pose his questions to Town Council for the last two years.
Well, you can ask that.
You can ask whatever you want, but I can bet you outbid-
Can you clarify, what do you hold for? I'm sorry?
If, if the Board of Selectmen has to approve every request of any board, elected or not, in this town-
Right.
Then they, in essence, if that's the case, then every time Michael Farrell- then every time Michael Farrell as town administrator went off, and I've had conversations with the chairman saying, who asked Michael to ask Town Council this question? And the answer was, I don't know.
Okay, um, what, what, um, what-
What I'm saying is, we don't need anyone's permission to ask Town Council a question.
Maybe we should-
We can agree to disagree.
Yeah. Well, I-
Maybe we should get a Town Council opinion.
I was just going to say, but I didn't, I, huh?
I was so, so close to saying that. Maybe, maybe we could, maybe we could review the bylaw that Howard just mentioned, when we have it written in front of us, and Howard would be kind enough to give us the citation so we can, uh-
You could probably pull it up right here, right?
No, I can't. No, I hope you go online. But if you could send that out, um, the citation of that-
Yeah.
And one, one or whatever you said. And if you could send that out, maybe we could look at it. And it's just like ten o'clock, somebody said that earlier tonight, ten o'clock.
Well, then, I'd like to continue the discussion.
Absolutely, and maybe we could bring this, put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay?
Where is the response-
And there is something else.
To my questions.
And which questions are those, Chris?
The multi-part question about-
I think that's the one, the responsibilities of the school building committee?
No.
Limited site plan approval.
Limited site plan approval.
That's, I think, probably this one. I don't know if that's-
We're all, limited site plan approval. Refresh my memory as to the question, please.
John Metier, I don't have a John Eichman.
Committee and/or their representative decide, can they apply for a limited site plan?
Where are you seeing that?
Can you show me that?
I placed it on the last page.
Responsible is the-
Where's the question?
On the very bottom.
Limited site plan appro- I, I don't have that.
I don't have it either, there's-
Everybody has a copy of it, so when these supplemental packets get taken apart, it's a single page.
Oh, okay.
Is that stable?
Oh, okay, it's a single page, that's why.
I want to-
It got stuck in, okay. John Eichman, here we go. And the question is, John, a majority planning board asks for a response. Should the school building committee and/or their representative decide to, can they apply for a limited site plan approval? Is that the question you wanted?
I want to see, I got to read in a minute because mine was a lot longer than that.
Can I see that?
There's a single page here, and they're all up there.
And it was a motion that was passed by the board. And
It's on page nineteen, I think, Chris.
Yeah, well, it's also on page eleven.
The motion is there, line seven ninety-three.
Line four seventy-six. Do we communicate in writing and ask written responses following questions? Should the school building committee and/or their representatives decide, can they apply for limited site plan? They can.
That's not it.
Is there anything precluding the planning board from accepting an application for a limited site plan approval in a situation of school building? Under the government's forty-eight.
Bingo.
Okay.
Bingo. Oh, sorry.
Go crazy.
Sorry.
Go crazy for this.
I was hoping I could get in.
Kick it all, kick all the electrical wires around. Chris, have you, have you identified what, uh-
There are actually three motions.
You took that long.
Okay.
There's two.
Two motions, three?
And, there's one on eleven, and there's one somewhere on fourteen.
I wonder if, if we could send him the citizen thing that we got at the class and ask him to read it, and maybe he's not aware of what we're getting at the classes we're going to. John Eichman.
Well, let's, let's resolve one, one question.
Eleven failed, and-
Can we, can we-
To respond to that.
One minute, Tilly, please, let's, let's resolve one question.
Eleven failed?
Yeah.
Three to two.
Motion fails, three to two. Line four forty-five.
Chris, the one you were just reading was the one that I summarized in my email to John Eichman.
And, and should the school building committee-
Line four forty-five is before the motion was made.
Oh, that's Tilly's, that's Tilly's.
Tilly made the motion that failed. The motion that I made.
Yeah, where, where's your motion? What number is it?
Yeah, that's at four seventy-six on page eleven twenty-three. Is Chris, Chris's motion. Motion that we communicate with the Town Council, right?
Writing, ask for a written response. Can they apply for a limited site plan approval? If they can, if they, this is taken verbatim, this question, Chris. Look at it. It's taken verbatim.
And I think it's identical to what's on page, on line five thirty-nine.
Well-
Okay.
What if, what if we-
I thought we incorporated in the motion the, the statements about the bullet points that I raised. About safety.
The motion's on pa, page thirteen, line five thirty-nine. Motion, communicate with Town, ask for a written response to this, to this question. And I'm, I'm seeing, I mean, I'm looking at the email, and they, I don't see too much difference.
You know, this, his answer, and it's a good thing we're on TV because I tell you in construction terms what this answer's worth. It's not worth the paper it's written on because it's not an answer to the question. So, maybe we should, should ask Mr. Eichman, enough with the fluff, answer the bloody question. To tell us that is all he's doing is restating what he said before. It does not answer any of the questions. Why don't we invite him to show up here? This is craziness.
Chris, not for anything, but I don't see how any, how it can be any plainer. Should the school building committee-
I'm not, yeah, look.
Can they apply for limited site plan approval?
I didn't say it was Howard's fault. I'm saying John Eichman didn't answer the question.
As we discussed, the zoning bylaws do not provide for limited site plan approval. I, I don't think it can be any more frank or clear than that. I really don't.
It says it doesn't provide for it.
Right.
That doesn't mean someone can come in and apply for it.
Yeah, that's different.
Well, it doesn't pro-
May I suggest-
No provision for it, um, well, okay.
There's an exemption for site plan approval for things, but the people who are exempted from it can come in.
I would love him to come in, I've been wanting him to come in from the beginning.
And we can debate this until-
If he doesn't answer the question.
Until, do you have a motion, would you like to ask another question?
I would like-
Make a motion, if you have a motion.
To make a motion that we ask Attorney Eichman to answer the question.
Motion by Chris to ask Attorney Eichman to answer-
The question posed by the planner.
Question posed by the planner on-
This is nuts.
Yeah, it kinda is.
We didn't ask, I mean, look at his answer.
Hang on, I'm repeating the question, and I'm trying to get the motion correct. Please. Motion by Chris to ask Attorney Eichman to answer the question posed by the planner on April eighth two thousand thirteen at four eighteen P.M. Subject, Henbrook School. Limited site plan approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Tim seconds?
Discussion.
Discussion, go ahead, Nick.
All right, the second sentence, Chris, on this paragraph.
Keep it to the question, please.
The planning board may grant waivers from the site plan approval pursuant to the criteria, therefore limiting the extent of site plan review. So, what you would do on the application is the applicant would put "not applicable" and then request a waiver.
Oh, gee. I told the people on the school building committee I would ask the question.
Right, well-
And you certainly did, and now we're going to ask it again.
The motion was, the question was, can the school building committee apply for a limited site plan approval? And essentially what John Eichman says is no. He says zoning bylaws don't provide for a limited site plan review. So he said, no, it doesn't. And then he did go on to say, if they, if the school building committee wants to come to the planning board for consultation, for their opinion, that's up to them. But the, the planning board cannot mandate that the school building committee obtain site plan approval.
Okay, then tell me what this means. If site plan approval is required, the project proponent must submit an application, and the planning board must act on the application in accordance with one sixty-five eighty-three. The planning board may grant waivers from site plan approval requirements pursuant to the criteria set forth in one sixty-five eighty-three, thereby limiting the extent of site plan revol, removal, uh, review. Would that tell you that there is a limited site plan approval?
No, that would tell me that there is site plan approval which this board can choose to limit the extent of.
Right, that you go in with a site plan approval, and then we can say, well, we're going to limit.
And basically, they got to trust us that we're not going to be crazy people and like, carry on, on and on.
Right, and drag this thing out.
And drag it out. Not that we would ever do that on this board for any topic.
I think it makes good sense for us to have been asked to do a site plan review. But in this guy's opinion, we can't mandate it.
I would, I would-
No, we can't mandate it.
I would like to send-
Nobody's trying to mandate it, those people asking to find out if they can come in and ask for limited site plan review.
Chris, Tilly wants to mix up.
I'd like, I'd like to have, send John Eichman the pamphlet that we got on the conference.
I don't have a problem with you sending that.
Exceptions, and underline that paragraph that said that they can have a site approval.
Does anybody have a problem with Tilly sending pamphlets to Town Council?
And ask him, you know, to confer that this is an opinion from this, these attorneys.
No one has a problem with you sending the pamphlet.
And then we'll send it to them.
Ship it off.
Ship it.
Um, okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Motion by Chris to ask Attorney Eichman to answer the question posed by the planner on April eighth two thousand thirteen at four eighteen P.M. Subject, Henbrook School, limited site plan approval. Motion was made by Chris, seconded by Tim. All in favor of asking him to answer this question, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor of sending this request, say aye, say nay.
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 Now, do I need a motion to send?
Motion fails. One thing at a time, please, please, Tilly. Motion fails. One to four.
I mean, we've essentially been told we can't. We have to go through the select, we have to get the selectmen's approval to go to John Eichman.
And Howard's going to show the bylaw.
I want to, I want a motion for-
Okay, Tilly, there's a motion being, no, no, there's a motion being asked. No, wait a minute, there's a motion, Tilly.
Motion to send to Mr. Eichman
Send.
The section that we received at the, at the Holy Cross Conference concerning site approval.
A pamphlet? Or what, how to describe it, a pamphlet?
Pamphlet.
Uh, to send some information?
Handout received at the conference.
A handout.
Handout received. And ask him to-
At the conference. And ask him to do what?
To confirm what opinion he would have after he reads it to the site plan approval.
To confirm his opinion.
To confirm his opinion on what?
The opinion that he stated.
That is stated in the site plan approval section.
Okay.
For exemptions of the chapter forty-eight. Section three.
Second.
Well, hang on, because I don't even know what I'm repeating here.
Wendy, you have a-
Motion to send Attorney Eichman the section we received at the Holy Cross Conference
To confirm his previous opinion in regards to the site plan approval.
On regards to site plan approval.
It's past ten, we're doing that, I'm calling blue, Joe.
Tilly, yeah, Tilly's made a motion to send the pamphlet to John Eichman and to ask him to confirm his opinion.
After reading it.
After reading it.
Yeah. I will highlight it.
Is there a second?
Somebody's seconded.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Tim seconds.
Well, Chris seconded it for us.
I didn't hear it, Tim seconds, at any rate, whatever, somebody seconded it, we can discuss it, go.
Who are you putting down for a second?
I'm putting Tim, I heard Tim, I didn't hear Chris, whatever.
All right.
I think it's an interesting question, I don't know if it's actionable because-
No.
Legal opinions differ. He could simply say, I don't agree with this.
Yeah.
Well, whatever he does, that's his response, I don't-
But the town has to pay for him to read a pamphlet.
Did we, if, if I may, as part of this discussion-
Please.
Please.
Your opinion.
I didn't see in his, is his opinion in there the question that we asked about our agenda?
And Eichman answered it?
About vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in there.
I didn't see that. Or is that the one that Mike Farrell responded?
Well, I, I think these responses are something that we should be discussing next meeting because we haven't had a chance to see them.
Oh, then maybe we should start with supplemental packets that we get at the board at the meeting.
No, supplemental packets are absolutely crucial because, you know what, we won't be able to do anything.
That's your vote.
Well, you have them now.
Okay. Right?
Yeah, but if we're going to spring stuff on, in a supplemental, all the other meetings we get a supplemental, we go through it all. This supplemental, because someone doesn't want to talk about it, or it might be getting late in his, on his watch, so we don't talk about it?
Talk about it, and we can have it put on the agenda item for the next meeting. And that was my initial suggestion, if you recall, and it probably is in the minutes. But we are insisting on discussing this.
Well, you know, Harry, tonight, I don't have to tell you what the duties and responsibilities of a chairman are. You're the referee.
If you want to hear it, we will talk about it, and right now, we're talking about it. So, let's discuss it, there's a motion on the floor.
On our agenda.
We were talking about it.
Still, Tilly's motion out there.
I know, the motion's on the floor, I'm waiting for discussion. Okay, so, uh, but we haven't heard from Tim. Any discussion?
No.
Need me to repeat the, the motion? We're discussing, is Tilly sending the pamphlet and asking Mr. Eichman to confirm his legal opinion on site.
How many pages are that, is that pamphlet?
I think it's thick, but the thing is, is that the section about this is not. It's like two paragraphs about that size.
But he needs to read the whole pamphlet?
No, only, only for-
Maybe we should just limit it to that, the pertinent section.
Can we, yeah, can we like-
Yeah, condense it just to that, I'll just copy it word for word and from the-
Scan it, can you scan it?
No, I can't on my machine. I'll have to come down and you have to hold for me.
Just drop it off, and I can make some copies.
My initial thought was, this is not going to take us anywhere except to have him write a, write an invoice.
You know what it is.
But it might provide him some information and another perspective.
Exactly.
Just another way of thinking about it.
And there is, there is another hearing going on where the attorney, at the ZBA, where the attorney was present and he said it comes from 48, Section 3, under agriculture. And if they come to a site approval, which they are planning on doing, we cannot deny it based on that exemption. The attorney of the applicant said that and I watched it on TV. So it'll, it's all of a sudden it's coming up more frequently than, than it ever has.
May I ask if Attorney Eichman does not confirm, but completely goes 180 degrees from his opinion? What will happen from there? Where, what would we do from there? And how would the situation appreciably change on the ground? Maybe I'm just not seeing that.
Yeah, well, we'll see what he says. I mean, these people are well qualified.
And from that, what will you expect to happen?
Not, nothing.
Once he has this knowledge and we have this knowledge.
For our own benefit. And for, for like Bob's saying, for the future.
For our edif-.
Um, you know.
Education.
For his edification.
And, and whatever, whatever comes in, I would think that we would, if, if it was anything different, that the building inspector would have, have a copy of it, whatever his response is. Because ultimately, it starts and ends with the building inspector, what permit is granted.
Okay.
So if the building inspector has another opinion, he sets the opinion. If he wants to follow this guy, or this guy, or this guy, it's up to him. Now, he did not.
Well, you can talk to the building inspector for free.
Well, I had asked for him to show up at a meeting, but he, what was it, he had a con con meeting or something, he wrote, I, he was requested to attend.
Whatever, whatever.
So you don't know where it'll lead, maybe nowhere, but then it's just knowledge.
But should we be paying to educate the attorney?
It's educating us.
That's a value question, I mean, does the, does this board get that amount of value out of engaging him to do this? I, I have no idea, I have no idea.
I'm not an attorney, but if I cast an opinion as an attorney, I wouldn't go against my own opinion, I'd find a way to support it. Regardless of what the other opinion is, that's what attorneys are trained to do.
When he answered the email, of course, it's tough when you're on an email, cause it's very, the sentences are very short and usually a question will lead to another question.
It's not a dialogue, yeah.
Yeah, and so he seemed to be, I got the impression he's very firm on this and he's not going to sway. But perhaps he never saw another opinion. Maybe he will communicate with this attorney and find out why they said what they said. So that perhaps he would reconsider his original opinion. In any event, we know that there's other opinions out there, like going to this class.
And other belly buttons.
So.
Oh, you know, that's, that's.
Everybody's got them.
You know, that's not fair, Harry.
Well, I think it is fair.
They're educated, they're educated opinions that differ with case, with supporting cases.
I understand.
That differ the stance that our town council.
I think we have already established the fact that there is town council's opinion on the subject and there is an alternative opinion, I think we've established this fact.
Yeah, but to, to minimize it and say, like, everybody's got belly buttons.
That's not.
We know those opinions are out there.
Way to put it, but.
We know the opinions are out there. My point is, when, when Mr. Eichman is presented with that alternative opinion, what will the net effect be to change the situation? And I would say that it will not change the situation.
Perhaps it won't, but I'll tell you what experience I had with the zone, with, I don't recall if it was John Eich or Joel Bard who showed up at the zoning board for something and, uh, and we had, it was a very complex hearing. And going through the training, Joel Bard usually was the teacher at a lot of these citizen trainings. So I had this pamphlet, just like we got at the Holy Cross, there we are with Joel Bard's comments. Well, he came, he came into the hearing in the audience and he participated. And I said, I said, it didn't click with me, I said, oh, is this your paper? You know, and I showed him the paper and, yeah, it is, I says, well, can you read this part here? It was exactly the opposite than what he was telling us. Exactly.
What a diet.
So, you know, they do change their mind as case law comes up.
Depends on who's asking the question.
No.
Did we vote or not?
No, we haven't done it yet.
Let's get it.
We're still waiting for everybody else to respond.
I have, uh, one last question, how much you think it's gonna cost?
We can get any bills for the insurance.
How much it's gonna cost me? Nothing.
No, well, you pay taxes in town, so.
Yeah.
And we're gonna walk you out, one question.
What do they.
I don't know how much it costs, I mean, is it gonna cost 50 bucks?
Mm-hmm.
Cost 200 bucks? Cost 500 bucks?
I don't know.
Could be 500.
How many hours you want him to spend on it? How slow you want him to read? I'd read every word, three, four times, I'd check spelling, punctuation. And then I'd really confirm my opinion. I'd spend a good long time on it, cause I'd wanna give a good answer.
Call the question, please.
Okay, been asked to call the question, all in favor of sending Mr. Eichman the pamphlet received at the Holy Cross Conference?
I'm sorry, something interrupted, did you just wanna send him the section of the pamphlet?
This section.
Uh, the appropriate section of the pamphlet, is that all right with everybody to modify the? And ask him to confirm his previous opinion regarding site plan approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Four to one. Motion carries.
Good. My last question. The question we asked to be posed to town council about agendas and votes on the agenda. Was that answered by Eichman?
No.
Was it sent to Eichman?
Yes.
Do we have a reason why it wasn't answered by Eichman?
He responded, didn't he?
He just said yes.
No.
No.
No, I believe you're confusing it.
Response came back from town administrator.
Yeah.
So the town administrator stopped the email? Or, or stopped the answer?
Uh, where is it?
He basically said that he didn't think it was necessary, I don't think, would that be a.
I think he referred to a past question or something, a past opinion. Where are we?
Did we ever get a copy?
That would be censorship as far as I'm concerned.
And the question asked, Planning Board meeting, Mike 27, Planning Board member raised concern regarding a recent vote of school building committee? Is that the one you're asking?
A vote.
Recent vote was a revote by the school building committee, it was required as the previous vote was considered in conflict with the open meeting laws.
No, we asked a specific question.
Well, maybe we should ask Mike for a copy of the attorney's comment.
Howard, didn't we ask a specific question consistent with, does the word?
The planning board requests a written clarification as to the use of, in quotation, "vote"
in an agenda item description.
It's too late.
Must the word "vote" be in the description in order for the planning board to vote on that item? Must all votes to be made by the planning board be listed on the agenda? If so, does this make all previous votes by the planning board null and void?
That was my question.
What, what he said though, is what Farrell said, is that the vote was held on a topic, on the topic that wasn't on the agenda. So I think that's where he's splitting the hair. That it wasn't that the word "vote" had to be on the agenda, but the topic had to be on the agenda.
I would like to ask Michael Farrell if he stopped our question from going to town council.
I think he did.
Well, I'm not gonna assume that. I'd like to know if the question we posed, cause you sent an email to Jonathan Eichman. Now, my other question is, is Jonathan Eichman checking in?
Read through, read through, because it's obvious, because it says, although the word "vote" was not required to be on the agenda for the topic of discussion, is required. This question has been asked and answered, I see no reason to engage legal counsel.
Oh, you mean it's Mr. Farrell's opinion that's been asked and answered?
That's why I think if we just asked Mike Farrell, if he got a response from town council.
A written response.
We would like it copied, yeah, written.
Oh, okay, so gee. He said it was verbal.
Motion.
Let's see.
No, he said there was no reason to engage.
Yeah, no reason to engage.
At the meeting, Michael Farrell said his legal opinion was verbal.
Ah.
Oh, I would like it in writing.
Yeah.
And while we're asking him that, ask him if he ran that by any vote as well.
Chris, don't you say ask him, make a motion.
No, Harry, let me finish talking, don't tell me what to say and what not to say, I'll say what I want.
Because then you're gonna come back and say we made six.
I'll use my sarcasm.
Make a motion, please. Make a motion. So that we get it straight and it's in the record. Make a motion. Try to get out of here tonight, man. We're gonna do that with motions and seconds.
I went to law school, Harry, I can make something that should take five minutes, last five hours.
I know you can, I know you can, and you know what? I can walk the hell out of here and you'll take the chair and you'll be the one receiving it. So you'll be the one hearing the motion.
Thank you for doing that printout, did, did everybody get a copy?
Is there a motion you'd like to make? What do you, what action are you looking for, man? Come on.
I would like.
Tilly, please, a motion.
A consensus with the board to ask.
Motion by Chris.
Michael Farrell, this is not a motion, I just sent a consensus to the board. You don't need a motion for this.
No, you don't.
You're looking for an answer from general consensus.
To ask town council, not town council, the town administrator, if Mr. Snyder, if the town planner's email of April 1st, 2013 at 2:09 that he answered, if it was intercepted.
And the request was not completed.
Better yet, I will make the motion.
Okay, thank you very much, cause you didn't have general consent, I wasn't gonna, go. Motion by.
By me.
Chris? Two.
Have the town planner.
Have the planner.
Inquire upon the town administrator.
Inquire of TA.
If the administrator instructed town council.
Instructed town council.
Not to.
Not to.
Answer the question.
Answer. Not a question.
Posed.
Posed.
In that April 1st.
Yeah, on the April 1st?
April 1st, 2013, 2:09 PM.
2013, 2:09 PM.
To John Eichman.
To John Eichman.
Further.
Further.
Mr. Farrell cites in his response of same date to that email that the question has been asked and answered, we'd like to see a copy of that. That is all.
Yeah, Wendy, I sort of stopped halfway through that.
Motion to have the planner inquire.
Sorry, can I read it for you?
Oh, okay.
A motion to have the town planner inquire of the town administrator if the administrator instructed town council not to answer the question posed on the April 1st, 2013 email to John Eichman, period, further.
Response to that question.
If the town council responded to that question that has been asked and answered, we would like to see a copy of that.
Uh-uh. No. Further.
Is.
Consistent with town administrator's email back to you. If the question has been asked and answered, we would like a copy of it. Same date, April 1st.
Waiting for a second, kids.
Second.
Tilly wins. Tilly seconds. Okay, it seems pretty simple. Planner, we're gonna have Howard ask the town administrator if the administrator instructed town council not to answer the question posed by the planner on April 1st, 2013 at 2:09 PM to Jonathan Eichman. Further, consistent with the town administrator's question has been asked and answered, we would like a copy of it.
Town administrator's response that the question has been answered.
Response that the question has been asked and answered, we would like a copy of it. Tilly seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Motion adjourned.
Was it nay? Motion carries.
Second.
Three to two. Motion two, we are done, right, with everything?
We got the thing from Nunes.
What do we have?
We have a, a letter about whether it's an outdoor amusement or outdoor private activity.
Oh, yes, that was, that was a question that was posed, right?
May we discuss this.
At a later date?
Meeting.
Uh, certainly, may we discuss it when we have to deal with site plan approval, if we do? Is, does anyone have a problem with discussing this at the next meeting?
No.
No.
Howard, would you please put.
Who was the two that voted no, I didn't hear that.
I've, I voted no.
You voted no too?
Yeah. Would you put, what's it called? The response from, of the building inspector to the planning board's request? Would you please put that under correspondence for the, for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, you're gonna respond, no, okay, you're all voting. Uh, motion to.
Getting agreeable.
No one's gonna think that. Motion to adjourn by, who was that from?
Everybody.
Tilly. Who seconded?
Everybody.
Chris did. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, motion carries, first unanimous. Everybody, at night, motion.